I would like to call the meeting order. Please, thank you. This is Wednesday, March 18th. We are at a regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission. Good evening, I'm Mayor Alice Norris.
Commissioner James Nacita.
Mr. Doug Looney.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Thank you, please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with originality and justice for all.
Thank you. As you better all know, this is Oregon City's 150th birthday and so every meeting during the year of that sesquicentennial, I present a sesquicentennial moment. It's supposed to be little-known facts or interesting facts about Oregon City. So the one this evening is, did you know that the first white child born in Oregon City was Mary Ellen Waller who arrived in May 5th, 1841? She was the daughter of the Methodist missionary Alvin Waller who Jason Lee recruited to come to Oregon. She was born at the Methodist Mission House, a combination granary, meeting house, school and church located near the mouth of Abernathy Creek. At one end of a large, single-room cabin was a storehouse for barrels and bags of grain, complete with rats. The other end had board seats stretched across stumps for whatever group was meeting there at the time, whether it be a class of Indian children, a class of white children, a Sunday congregation, or the committee that met there in May and June of 1843 to draft the provisional government's first constitution. And therein ends your sesquicentennial moment.
I object.
You're out of order.
The birth occurred eight years before this state was formed. It is not a 150th moment, I can't pronounce the other word.
The purpose of these moments is to remind everyone that Oregon City predates statehood, but it is an interesting fact in our history. Okay. Any other debate on this robust matter?
I can say the word. I can pronounce it.
Go ahead.
Well, now I hope I can.
Mr. Smith, we're all waiting.
Sesquicentennial.
Very good, okay.
No, I'm not going to.
Thank you. Let's move along to a report that we've all been waiting for, for a while, and I'd like to call up Representatives of ODOT to talk to us about the Westland Arch Bridge and I believe some other ODOT projects. Rich Wantanavi, I introduce you and please also introduce yourselves and then begin your presentation. Welcome.
Thank you very much for inviting us to talk to you today. I've brought along with me Rick Keen, who is our project leader for the Oregon City Arch Bridge and a number of projects in the area. Wayne Stadler, if you can raise your hand, he's going to be our project manager for a lot of projects in the area. Chris Leadham, who is a rich designer who's been working on the Oregon City Arch Bridge. And Judy Shioshi, who's our committee affairs manager with ODOT.
What's your name again, I'm sorry?
My name?
Rich Wantanavi.
Rich Wantanavi. I thought maybe what I'd do is start off with a quick overview of some of the projects that we have in the area and then we'll lead right into the Oregon City Bridge. We currently have the Oregon 213 project that's going to be undergoing paving from I-205 up to Conway Drive this summer. We just finished some retaining wall work for a landslide that occurred up there, so we're poised to get started as soon as the weather turns nice. Another project that we're working on is the Abernathy Bridge. The joints on the bridge itself need replacing.
Throwing out the only thing.
I must be talking too loud. Yeah, bad news. The joints on the bridge are in need of replacing and what we were planning to do was do it a little bit later than right now, but because of some of the complications that we've had on the Oregon City Arch Bridge, it's created some different timing and we identified that we need to get this done earlier and we want to get it done early enough so we're not into the holiday season. But it's going to be requiring replacement of the joints, some narrowing of the travel lanes, probably down to one lane during the weekends, possibly a ramp closure a few nights, but most of this will be on the weekend. There'll also be some night work. To resurface the bridge. This project would be tied up with another project that's called the Glenn Jackson Bridge up on I-205 over the Willamette River, so, or, excuse me, Columbia River. A third project that we're working on is down near mile point 13.8. It's south of town here in the straight stretch that's flat down past the Rocketts. We have a safety project that we're working on.
On 99?
On 99. It's planned to go to bid this summer. Oh, sorry, Abernathy, Glenn Jackson and Abernathy Bridge will go this summer also, and we're hoping to get it done before the holiday season, so it'll be weekend and night closures before that. The 99E South project will also go this summer. It's, we're looking at taking the four narrow lanes that we have out there and making three to create a center turn median to prevent, or reduce the potential for rear-end accidents and turning accidents. So we have a lot of work coming in this area and we're planning a big outreach to the public with the media and so forth to let people know that these projects are coming, be aware that the, there'll be some narrowing of lanes and so forth.
How long is that 99E stretch? What's the distance?
It's about a mile.
About a mile?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would lead into our Oregon City Arch Bridge and all, I know that's the biggest interest here, so I'll let Rick go with that.
Well, I echo Rich's thanks and for having us here. We appreciate sharing this wonderful project that we think the community's really going to see a lot of benefit from, but it is going to be a hardship for folks here, no doubt about that.
Is there any chance you could do that after my term is over?
That's right, or after I retire. The scope of work is rehabilitation of the bridge. It's about 80 years old, as folks know. It has not been rehabilitated to any extent in that time. As you know, you've seen weekend day closures, we're doing lots of inspection work, we're finding more and more work as we uncover the concrete that's covering the steel members of the bridge. So there is more and more work as we, as we see that we'll need more design time and also more work during the construction period. So we did probably share with folks a while ago that the bridge project may take as long as 12 months. Now we're up to 24 at least because this is, this is probably one of the most unique, if not most unique bridges in the world. Connie McCulloch built this thing to withstand the area's influences, pollution if you will, but it has lasted a long time, but it is going to take a lot of work to, to get it back up to its former glory. That'll include the elimination that was once there. I don't, I don't think that anybody can, probably can remember that, but we are, we do have pictures. We are going to restore the lighting. That also includes, the bridge rail will be completely taken off and replaced with a much stronger and also architecturally significant rail. Sidewalks will be almost completely replaced as well. We'll be doing some resurfacing. The concrete covering over the steel members of the arches will be completely replaced. A lot of work involved in that as well. A lot of work underneath the bridge structures as we look and see more and more work as we uncover the situation down there. As you know, there are utilities that hang underneath the bridge. We will have to relocate them, actually the utility companies will have to do that, and that will mean that closures will be imminent for them to get their work done. And we're looking probably about one to two week closures, probably coming up in two or three weeks.
You mean, two, three weeks from now?
Two or three weeks from now, that's right. We did not anticipate, they actually did not anticipate the amount of effort and the need for complete closure for this work, but they came to us and said, look, this, this work will take weeks and weeks and weeks for us to get done. It might make more sense for us to just close the bridge and have them get in, get out. That way we can begin our process of.
That's for utilities.
That's for utilities, gas and communication right now.
May I just quiz you on that to make sure I understand?
Yes.
So the bridge closure will be from one to two weeks long and it will be closed to all uses, so pedestrian, bicycle and automobile?
We think that we can accommodate bikes and pads during that phase of operation, and I can get into what we'll, what we'll need to have for the full closure.
Okay.
And maybe I'll get into that right now because I know the community has a great interest in.
We do.
In access. As I mentioned, the rails will be completely replaced. The sidewalk, most all will be replaced. Certain sections of the bridge surface will be completely replaced.
Commissioner Nacita.
What I'm really interested in seeing with the bridge, where the arches meet the surface, on the inside, the sidewalk, the whole thing narrows to the point where when a Tri-Met bus comes, it's really, you know, you have to wait for the whole bus to come through. Will that be widened sufficiently so that won't be an issue anymore?
We anticipated that question.
Yeah.
And that we know that that's a great answer to folks. The bridge is historic landmark and it was built in such a way that there are no bridge members that can be adjusted in any direction. That would mean then, of course, that the bridge width at those points will have to stay the same. We are going to readjust the concrete covering of the hangers on the arch, so they'll be a little bit inset, if you will. We noticed that that is where a lot of the side view mirrors get waxed, so we will be able to move those over some, I think about six inches if I'm right, about that. But in terms of adjusting any major component of the bridge, that's just really out of the question because of how it was built.
Commissioner Neely.
Since you brought up that particular point, that is a major concern of, I think, all of us here, I'd like to address it. You, Tri-Met commercial trucks are now not going on that bridge.
That's right.
They've done rerouting. Is the intent then to bring them back on?
There's no structural reason, when we're done with the bridge, that we could prevent them from being there. Right now, of course, we have a load limit that prevents them because they are beyond the 14-ton threshold. But our intent is to, to bring all bridge structural members up to where it was in 100, or 80 years ago. So that does not preclude then buses from crossing the bridge. Do you have a question?
If that happens, and actually I did, I did speak at a public meeting about this, but whether you could have a signalized system that could be triggered by the Tri-Met vehicle drivers to actually stop the traffic as they're approaching. A lot of people go across that bridge or were what they need to stop, but many of the cars do not and buses get held up there because of that, and if you had a signalized system there that was under the control of the bus drivers, I think it'd make a lot, it'd make it a lot easier for the buses to get across.
We have heard that. Currently, that is not part of our plan. It's, it is something that operates sufficiently, if you will, now. There are, you're raising your eyebrows and I agree that perhaps this is not the best situation, but our function right now is mainly structural and we do have a structural problem, as you know. So we could address.
You've got too much to think about, two years to think about it.
That's true. That's true. Can I just say this, just to help move this along, that we will consider that. I will take your concern and this council's concern back to our traffic engineers and we'll see what, what we can include in this project. Would that be okay?
I'm sure you have to go into rerouting. Want to take a question? Commissioner Smith?
When you were commenting about relocating utilities, tell me what that means. Is that relocating to a different part of the bridge so they're not as visible or taking them off altogether?
Right, right. Well, the reason that we are having the utility companies relocate their, their lines, as you know, there's, there's several conduits, at least on the upstream side of the bridge, they are covered now, but we have to have those lines moved for us to do our work. There are under, if you will, the underside of the deck, the bridge members there are in the conditions such that the only way to access those points for construction purposes is to have those utility lines relocated. So it doesn't really serve the purpose of aesthetics as much as it does the construction.
So when the bridge opens, the utilities will still be pretty much.
No, they will have to be, they will be underneath the bridge, right. We have provided a space for them to relocate those lines there. So they won't be, the sewer line will still be there. That cannot be moved and it cannot be upsized, if you will. So that's going to stay where it's at. But I believe, are we going to cover that though with some special?
It'll be painted the same color as the bridge.
Okay, all right. But all the other utility lines will be colored in such a way that they won't stand out like they might perhaps.
I wasn't, I just have to say one last thing, which I'm just so excited about this project and more, more so than probably any project in Oregon City I've seen in a long time, and I have really personal, personal connection to this bridge and its history and.
So did you ride your bike up over the top?
No, but I tell that story a lot. Well, really quick.
No, but it launched his political career at four years old.
Yeah, at four years old, I told my grandma that I thought that the bridge was extremely ugly and my grandma hated hearing about the bridge being ugly because I'm sure she remembered it as a really nice bridge. And so as I kept saying that at four or five years old, she informed me that if I really thought that it was an ugly bridge, that I should call the mayor and let the mayor know my opinion of the bridge and that it needed to be dealt with. The mayor at the time was Don Anderson, my grandma's brother, and within about four years of that phone call, the bridge was painted and looked very, very nice, or as nice as it had in a long time. And so it's going to be great to see by the time I'm 34 that it's done and it looks the way it was when it was built in 1922, the most beautiful bridge in America. It's pretty amazing.
Thank you very much. We do take pride in this project as well.
So I think, you know, the closure of the bridge for two years is a very, very small price to pay, I think, to seeing this done.
Why don't you talk about that price a little bit?
Well, and I do have to mention that I do live in the area, so I will be affected as well, so I have a personal interest in these projects.
Are you going to talk about the rerouting and how, what ODOT's going to do to?
Absolutely. We have, we have a traffic or transportation management plan and it was very extensive in how we are going to deal with the traffic issues associated with this closure. You can't just shift 14,000 cars and just to anywhere, so. But the logical endpoint for folks on the Westland side is the 99E intersection area. That's just where folks are going to end up for the most part. They'll probably wind their way maybe to 213 perhaps, but folks in the local area will know where to go over time, but we are concentrating our efforts in the 99E intersection off-ramp area because we know that's going to be the most congested, and it is now. So there are going to be some striping changes. You'll probably see those as part of Oregon City's 99E project and we'll adjust signal timing, of course. We're adding signals down there to address potential congestion problems. We're certainly going to have the capacity to monitor that intersection and make adjustments where we see necessary. Usually, under, with projects of this magnitude, you're going to see about a week of folks just kind of getting used to the closure and then how to get around. Then at that time, folks will then decide how they're going to address the, their own personal needs. And by, at that time then, then we'll probably start looking at, folks have got their routes down, they've got what, the choices they have to make, whether they like them or not, then we'll start making the adjustments as we see necessary. I can't, it's going to be congested, there's no doubt about it.
There's only one choice, isn't there? The Abernathy Bridge?
That's, yeah, to cross the river, that's the only way to do it. But they do have choices on the north side, but they are limited, of course.
Mr. Patterson?
Quick question, the way you introduced that timeframe earlier, I denoted that there's possibility it may go longer than two years, is.
Well, yeah. We're holding to two years at this point, okay? We did, we've increased the time by almost 100% now, but as I mentioned, we are uncovering more and more problems on the other side of the bridge, so we can say two years at this point right now and we'll hold that tonight anyway and we will keep folks up to date as we get information, but it's because of the unique character of this bridge, it's very difficult to determine, and even contractors were having a hard time. We had a, it's called a contractability meeting just not too long ago. They're scratching your head. How are we going to do this work? It's going to take barges in the river. It's going to take skills that not very many people have, so it's going to be very challenging. So I can promise you though, that we'll do the best we can and we'll keep the contractor working as hard as we can to get this bridge completed, but in a way that will complement the city and will be around longer than anyone in this room will be, I guarantee you that.
Commissioner Neely.
You mentioned about the projects on both the 205 and the Arch Bridge starting out for the summer. Are they going to be done in such a way that whatever's done, whatsoever done on the 205 bridge will not be during the rerouting time from the arch?
Absolutely, absolutely. Rich mentioned there's a lot of traffic work that, or a lot of construction work that we're doing. We're very aware of how that's going to be coordinated, what we need to do to minimize the effects of construction activities. We will not close the Arch Bridge until the Glenn Abernathy Bridge is completed because we, that is the bridge that will carry the detour traffic. The good part about the Abernathy Bridge project is that we're putting a nice, clean surface on it. It's a very, it's a new surfacing technique that, very fast cure, very durable. It'll completely cover up the rutted surface that you see there today. We know that that's an issue with folks, so by the time we have that project completed, then we'll move toward closing the, or the Arch Bridge and then folks won't have the issues that they had today, at least with the surface on the Arch, Abernathy Bridge. So we're, we are very aware that coordination is key and we're not going to have a situation where one project is going to affect the traffic of another. Yeah, guarantee you.
How do citizens get information if you change, you say it's going to be a closure at this time, but you've changed it? How does a citizen get that information?
We have a website.
It's a website?
That we do, and we also are going to do extensive media exposure and we have had several public meetings. I've seen Rocket, several of them myself, and we're doing what we can to get the word out. We know that folks are very interested in how this is going to affect their lives and the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, Bolton Neighborhood, we've been in contact with lots of folks and thankfully they, they understand the situation, they appreciate the effort that all of us are doing and they know that they're going to have a structure that they'll be able to enjoy then into the future.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming to give us that personal report.
And bringing all your staff with you, that's a real time commitment. I appreciate you all coming out here, thank you.
Can I just mention one thing? There has been a concern with how bikes and pedestrians are going to get across the bridge back and forth for their safety, and it is strictly for their safety. We do need to have folks use the existing Tri-Met system and we know that that will probably not be enough, so we will take strides to supplement the transportation back and forth across the river to help folks that choose to ride their bikes and walk. And if that's not working, we'll even put in more to supplement what we think and where folks see the need.
Additional shuttle, you think?
Additional shuttle and Tri-Met has.
Will that be helpful?
Yeah, has stepped up as well, so.
Okay, good to know. Thank you, thank you very much. Next we have our fire chief, Chief Ed Kirshoffer here, who's going to give us an update from the fire district. Greetings, Ed.
Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Mayor. PowerPoint presentation I was going to give, if it's ready at all. Okay, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to update the city commission on the activities of the fire district over the last year and what we see as coming in the future. Just a brief overview of what the fire district is. We are one of the major fire service agencies in the state, made up of four major divisions. Little bit about the fire district, just in, as a refresher, is that we are the second largest fire district in the state of Oregon, providing services to approximately 178,000 citizens. We're ISO Class III district-wide, which puts us in the top 3% of fire departments nationally. All staffed fire stations in the fire district provide advanced life support, emergency medical services, and that provides a tremendous service and enhances the survivability of major EMS events in the community. The fire district has a permanent tax rate of $2.40 per thousand and bonded debt of 6 cents, 6.7 cents per thousand. Seventeen fire stations, four of them providing services to the city of Oregon City, and that includes Holcomb, John Adams, Hilltop and South End. Cover 194 square miles and we provide service to five different cities, so four cities in addition to Oregon City. One important point I wanted to make is there are 12 firefighters on duty per day in Oregon City, which is three more than were, than were there just eight months ago now. This is just a map of the Oregon City area showing the station locations that I mentioned earlier and a few highlights of last year. We responded on 16,063 emergency responses and you can see the breakdown between fire and emergency medical. We conducted over 2,000 fire inspections. We're very committed to fire and life safety in the community and reviewed 462 building plans, that's pre-construction, to ensure that they're built in a safe manner that guarantees safety of firefighters and more importantly, our citizens far into the future. This is a graph showing the trending in emergency responses for the fire district. You can see a continued upward trend in total emergency activity and EMS activity continuing, and you can see the trend for fire responses is holding fairly flat, even given the larger population that we serve. And I'd like to say that's related to our fire prevention efforts. Activities for last year with the Oregon City stations, you can see there were, from the Holcomb Station, a total of 485 incidents and that's within their first response area. The engine company itself responded on 924 incidents. The John Adams Station where Truck 15 is located had a total of 1,257 incidents in their first due area and responded on a total of 1,446. The Hilltop Station had 1,903 emergency responses and responded on 1,876. And why this is noteworthy is it shows the importance of having the depth of service in Oregon City. You can see that they responded on fewer calls than actually occurred in their first response area because of simultaneous incidents. So again, it demonstrates the importance of the South End Station and having that additional depth of coverage within the city. And then the South End Station, which was open for half the year, had 197 incidents within its first due area and responded on 430 calls, which again indicates how active it is responding throughout other areas of the city. it is responding throughout other areas of the city. Few things that we're very proud of from last year. We updated our Standards of Response document, which basically measures our performance and measures our emergency response activities and how we're doing. We try to measure everything to improve our performance. And when you measure things, they get better. And our employees are committed to doing that. We were awarded, as you're all aware, the HeartSafe Community Award, and that's one community in the world is recognized each year as a heart-safe community. And the communities served by our Fire District were awarded that by the International Association of Fire Chiefs last year. Our Training Division was recognized for its innovative training programs and received an Emerorious Service Award from the Oregon Fire Service. And the Fire District was recognized as the Fire District of the Year for the State of Oregon, which is something we're very proud of. We're committed to improving our fleet. And last year, we took delivery of two new fire engines and one new water tender. And all of those are areas that will back up response into Oregon City. And our physician supervisor was named the Medical Director of the Year for the State of Oregon, too, and that's Dr. Craig Warden, who also provides emergency medical supervision for our dispatch center. And our volunteer program is being reorganized. We're very proud to say we swore in just last night 14 new volunteers, who, most of them will continue in their training to become full firefighters currently. They're all support volunteers and provide support services at emergency scenes. And we're expanding and improving our chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive program, which is part of our Homeland Security efforts to improve safety in response to major incidents. Few highlights from 2008 in Oregon City, and I'm sure this is something the City Commission is very proud of as well, and that's that the South End Station was built in 2002. We signed the contract.
Completed in 2003.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, that was before we came in.
Yeah, well, I remember because I was mayor and we didn't want to talk about it.
In 2007, which I think is a culmination of the efforts of Oregon City staff, elected officials of the community and the Fire District and its employees, voters approved the annexation of the city by a rate of 74.37%. And then on July 1st of 2008, we opened the South End Station.
Woo-hoo.
And that's had a dramatic impact on response times around the city. The picture on the right was something we really appreciated, throwing that "Fire Station Closed" sign in the garbage can.
We appreciated it even more.
And then we remain very committed to fire safety in the community. The Hilltop Fire Safety Fair, which happens in September each year, is something we're very proud of. Our Helmets Are Cool program continues to be funded, and each one of our fire apparatus carries bicycle helmets. And if we, any of our firefighters see a child riding down the street without a bike helmet on, they can pull over, fit the child, and send him on his way with the helmet free of charge. And that's funded through our foundation. Oh, yeah, when they get home. We continue to be very successful seeking grant funding to help reduce the impact on taxpayers. And we received a $1.26 million grant from the federal government to enhance firefighter staffing. And three of those firefighters that were hired off of that grant are assigned to the John Adams Station. We received a $25,000 grant to conduct a major hazardous materials drill dealing with anhydrous ammonia. Anhydrous ammonia is a refrigerant gas. It's highly toxic, and it is in higher quantities in the area served by the Fire District than any other communities in the state of Oregon. And with the major north-south rail line, as well as I-205 going through the Fire District, and the fixed facilities that use anhydrous ammonia, we have a tremendous risk in the community. And we're having a very large-scale incident management drill dealing with response to anhydrous ammonia emergencies this spring. And our foundation continues to really focus on placing AEDs in the community. We just received another $40,000 grant from Plaquemine County using EMS system enhancement funds. To date, the Fire District has spent over $90,000 deploying AEDs through matching grants for-
AED?
AED.
Yeah.
Automatic External Defibrillator, sorry. Comes so easy for me. I've got so many acronyms in my head. But we've deployed 168 to date, and that number grows on a regular basis. It's one of our major success stories. And what the future holds, we're really looking to provide stable service through difficult economic times. As all of our members of our community are challenged during these times, so is local government. And the Fire District, I'm here to say, is on sound financial footing. And though we'll be challenged, and we are, you know, tightening our belts to adjust to lower property tax collection rates and reduced revenue, we have done so and anticipate absolutely no impact on emergency response. The public we serve, it should be seamless for them through this time. Focused on planning for the future, and in our future efforts, we really want to focus on prevention rather than intervention. Whenever we can, if we can work to prevent the incident through education, through fall prevention techniques, we're trying to get involved in fall prevention with senior facilities and with our elderly population that we serve, as well as building design and so on, to reduce the impact and further reduce the impact of fire. As you can see by the slides, fire incidents aren't going up. They're remaining fairly flat. And we hope that continues to be the trend or continue to go down. And if we can do that through good engineering, through solid services in that regard, before the incident happens, we can save lives and reduce the risk to firefighters as well. And reducing community risks, I mentioned the medical and disaster planning and fire responses. There's our, the city's EOC is located in the John Adams Station, which is there to help-
EOC.
Emergency Operations Center.
Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you. Just keep reminding me.
I know. You know, normally we make people eat gummy worms when they have-
Yeah. That was-
We've also made hurried gummy worm.
And that was it for the slideshow. Just wanted to give a brief overview, but have the opportunity for any questions from the mayor or the commissioners?
Chief, I just wanted to say again, thank you for opening South End Station early. You were actually anticipating on opening it last month.
Yes.
So you opened it nine months early. And I think you should reiterate the story that you told me to include in my State of the City.
Certainly. We did make the decision to hire early, to assume the cost of doing that prior to collecting any tax dollars from the City of Oregon City. The firefighters to staff that station were hired in April of last year, well before the effective date of the annexation. And because of the decision to open the South End Station early, we've actually had three cardiac arrest saves in that first due area that are clearly tied to quick response time of advanced life support medical personnel arriving on scene quickly, much more quickly than they would have prior to the station being open. So in other words, three people are alive today that wouldn't have been, had we not made that decision. So we're very happy about that. It clearly demonstrates-
And they are, too.
The, yes. Clearly demonstrates the importance of response time and strategically locating the appropriate resources in the community.
I just, again, thank you for that. The citizens that live around the South End Station are so grateful, and I hear so much gratitude, the fact that you did step up to the plate to do that. It was really important, I think, to our people. Commissioner Smith?
And then another thank you, actually, is for the continued partnership with the Pioneer Festival and the Teddy Bear Parade, which you have always been involved in, even when they, the Fire District wasn't really serving the city. And so they're, they've, I really appreciate that, and it's been a great, the Teddy Bear Parade itself has been a great program, and it's been nice to have the Fire District part of both of those events and all the other events that you do, which are far more numerous than what was listed on that little slide.
Just, one of our slogans at the Fire District is "Your Friend for Life." And I think what that really means to us is that we are part of the community. We don't look at just closing the doors on the fire station and waiting for an emergency to happen. We are active in the community and committed to being a community partner.
Thank you. One question about the future. I believe in our conversations that you were going to order a fire truck for use at South End Station. When will the service be upgraded there?
Well, with the challenges in the economy, we're going to have to delay moving that to an engine company, just because for every, in order to increase three full-time employees to increase the staffing, it requires 1% increase in revenue for the Fire District. And we're actually having reduced revenue compared to expenses. So it's going to have to wait for a turnaround in the economy. So we're happy to have the station open, but we're not going to be able to put an engine company there yet.
Thank you. Are there questions?
No, no, I wanted to give another thing. I don't know, I don't know if people recognize the tremendous amount of work that our mayor had put in in terms of getting some good people to organize the campaign. I mean, if you told me the three-quarters of the voters of Oregon City were going to vote positive on any tax measure, I just wouldn't have been able to believe it. And I was so highly impressed by that effort. Thank you, Alice.
Thank you. Well, I think the statistics that I like is that it passed from, it passed in Oregon City at a higher rate than it did in the Fire District. And they had nothing to lose. So I'm very proud of that, too. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. We'll see you around. Next, we'll move into the part of our agenda called Citizen Comment. It's an opportunity for citizens to address us on non-agenda items for up to three minutes. If you haven't filled out a form, please do so. And we ask at the mic that you come up and give your name and the city in which you reside. Come up in pairs, just expedite, since we've taken a long time in this section. Marge Harding and Paul Edgar, please come up together.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Marge Harding, Oregon City. And I would just like to read a statement. This is contrary to recent publicity. Historic Oregon City is open for business. As we know, there are more historic sites in Oregon City than just two museums and an interpretive center to share with the public. Meetings, groups, and tours that were previously scheduled at these closed venues can be and are being absorbed very nicely by other sites and local businesses. For over 12 years, a large group of volunteers, many here tonight, have worked together to create tours, festivals, events, and programs to tell the story of historic Oregon City. These volunteers represent such entities as the city-owned Francis Irmitinger House and Pioneer Center, as well as the cemetery, the McLaughlin and Barclay Houses, McLaughlin Memorial Association's Rose Farm, the Stevens Crawford Heritage House, Adkison Memorial Church, as well as the representatives from the Best Western Riverside Hotel, downtown businesses, tour operators, friends of Shempui living historians, and community leaders. Many, many volunteers. When tour groups or individuals come to visit, information and time are shared with all of the museum houses to create a most memorable experience for every visitor. If groups are interested in more than a tour, we can arrange living history, walking tours, spirit walks, teas, displays, and demonstrations, hands-on workshops, and classes. We create special educational living history programs for schools and other educational groups. These are all done on limited budgets, but with real working partnerships. If you have not visited these historic museum houses, please plan on doing so soon. Because the City of Oregon City has great history, and we want to share.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you for your service at Irmitinger House. Paul?
Thank you. My name is Paul Edgar. I'm from Kanema. In fact, the Land Use Chair. Some really exciting news, and something that I think that we need to share is, we have one of our neighbors, Ken Tinseth, has been deployed to Iraq. He was previously flying around the governor and doing a lot of things as part of the National Guard. But he is part of President Obama's new team going over there to bring about some new lifesaving techniques that's really based upon LIDAR. And it's an understanding of what happens to where our troops are going. And one of the things I just wanted to say is, Oregon City has some good people. This person is coming right out of Kanema, and we want to offer his, our prayers to him and to his wife and to the family for a safe return, and God bless America.
Thank you. And same to all of the other Oregon City residents who are, have been deployed. Next, Kathy Hogan and Amber Holbeck, please.
I'll go ahead. Kathy Hogan, I just came to announce that our Neighborhood Association meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 at the United Methodist Church on South End, right next to the South End Fire Station. So you can look at it before you come in the door. And everybody's welcome to come.
So Thursday night at-
Tomorrow.
What time?
7:00.
7:00 PM. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amber Holbeck. I'm with the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And this evening, I just wanted to share to our commissioners, as well as the community at large, that today the chamber had hosted a Community Service Awards luncheon to help celebrate and to thank and recognize those people in our communities who are the volunteers, the people that serve others, that see a need and they reach out and they do something about it. We worked with our Oregon City School District, the Rotary Club of Oregon City, Oregon City Kiwanis Club, Beaver Creek Lions, they're one of our good neighbors, Oregon City Lions, and the Seroptimists. And there are so many others that were not yet included, but we want to reach out and include them. It's important that we give that recognition to the folks that make such a vital difference in our community. You know, it was shared both by the mayor and myself that certainly, an individual can do some things. Individual clubs or service groups can do more things, but all of us working together to make a difference can really make an impact. And we wanted to salute those folks. And it looks like we'll be making that an annual event next year for April, which is National Volunteering Month. So I wanted to share that with all of you, and we look forward to serving with others in the future. Thank you.
It was a very nice event, to have all the people who serve the city together there in one room. Not all the people, but a number of them. Thank you for doing-
And just briefly, well, I'm at those television. We'll likely be broadcasting that event on their television.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have? Did I miss anyone? Thank you. Moving along, we're looking at the agenda, and I want to make an announcement in case you've come for this reason. Under public hearings, if, under 6C, we're going to consider an intergovernmental agreement now called a Cooperative Improvement Agreement with ODOT related to the Cove. If we do adopt that, we likely will not need to hear the appeal of Planning Commission, which is 6D. So please know that those two are in play together. Now, is there anyone that wishes anything from the consent agenda to be removed for a separate consideration? Seeing none, then we will take the agenda and the order and, oh, did you have something?
I actually did have something.
Yes?
Typically, on our agenda, we have an item on future agendas. We don't have that on today's agenda, and I do have a future agenda item.
No, we do that in work sessions. You can do that on a comment, though.
No, we have them on the City Commission.
No, but if you'd like to do that under Communications, that's a great place for it, under Commissioner Communications.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah. It's under Work Sessions, I think. But you can do that then. All right, moving along then to the agenda and the order in which it is listed. First is item 6A, which is the continuation of a public hearing for ordinance number 8-1014, which are copious amendments to the Oregon City Zoning and Development Codes. And staff is requesting a continuance of this item to May 20th. May I have a motion for continuance, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith for continuance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
May I make a request, though? We had some recommendations come out of a study session where we talked about this, I believe, and whether we could devote just a slight bit of our next study session back to this prior to this May 20th meeting.
I believe what we talked about was having a joint session with the Planning Commission.
Yes, and we continue-
Yes, and we continued far enough in the future, so we could have another one after that.
Okay.
Great, opportunity for at least two more. Great.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, those are complex and many, and we want to make sure we got a handle on those. So, thank you. Next, item six B, which is a public hearing on resolution nine dash oh-two, which are a presentation of our new transportation system development charges methodology, our transportation SDCs, amount with two components and implementation schedule. Nancy Froschauer will present with who is our city engineer and public works director. Nancy?
Good evening, Mayor Norris and commissioners. We spent a part of your recent study session, or work session, introducing you to the recommendations that we're going to be making tonight for the updated transportation system development charge. And as part of that, we have a slide presentation that will be given by John Giller Ducci from Financial Services, Financial Consulting Services Group. And he was hired by the city to do the financial analysis for our new transportation system development charge. We also hired DKSN Associates and used Carl Springer's Transportation Engineering Services to do a lot of the trip analysis and project analysis to come up with various, the various capital improvement projects that we base the new charge on. And I think what we'll do is have John go ahead and give his presentation. I have some slides at the end of it, which are staff recommendations to you. And then you can ask us questions. We also, I know there's a number of folks in the audience that would like to provide comments. And then we'll have some lively discussion, perhaps.
Okay. Before we start, I only have two comment cards on this one, so if you would please grab those. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
So, John, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. The way that I've laid out this presentation, I've got a little bit of background on system development charges and on Oregon City's existing charges. I'll talk a little bit about the process we've been through and some of the policy issues that we've discussed with the Transportation Advisory Committee, and then go into the calculation of the proposed charges. We're governed by Oregon Revised Statute two-two-three, two ninety-seven through three fourteen, which gives us a really good framework for how to calculate system development charges and how they're to be used, and really provides the rules of the road for us. Some key things to remember about system development charges, these are the one-time charges that are paid by new development at the time of development or redevelopment. They're not ongoing rates. They're for capital only, so we calculate them based on capital costs, and you can only spend them for capital construction. They can't be used on operations. Properties which are already developed, in general, don't pay SDCs unless they're redeveloping and adding demand for that service. SDCs include a future piece based on planned improvements, that's known as the improvement fee, and an existing buy-in piece, which is based on available capacity in existing infrastructure. That's called the reimbursement fee. I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. The two together give us our system development charge. And then finally, SDCs are for general facilities. They're not, so they're intended to represent a share of system capacity, as opposed to paying for project improvements or the costs of improvements that abut your property. The current system development charge that the city has has been in place since 1997. There have been inflationary increases, so you can see the current charge is $1,885 for a single-family residence, varies a lot for non-residential properties, depending on their estimated trip generation. So those charges can be a lot more for a developing commercial customer, for example. The formula that was used to calculate this charge 12 years ago is what's called the lane mile approach, in which you basically use the standards for how much road is needed for a particular amount of development, and you, using those standards and materials costs and labor costs, you literally cost out the amount of road needed to serve a new development or a new single-family residence, and that equals your SDC. The approach which we are proposing is different than the lane mile approach. We think this is, well, it's certainly more consistent with how SDCs are being calculated currently. We think it's probably more consistent with statute. But the reimbursement fee, which is that buy-in to existing facilities, is calculated by estimating the value or cost of unused capacity in your existing system, and we divide that by the growth that it will serve. And that gives us our reimbursement fee. And the growth, in this case, is expressed in trip generation. For the improvement fee, which is the...
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Commissioner Nocita?
Eligible value, can you explain that term?
Sure. And of course, there's, it's a complicated answer. The law says that you can use cost or value of unused capacity in the existing system, and you have to consider a number of things in estimating that cost or value. You have to look at contributions by prior users. You have to, and we've interpreted that to generally mean contributed assets, grant-funded facilities, donated facilities cannot be included in the reimbursement fee basis, so we take those out. And those are generally the adjustments we make. And then we try to look at, we try to look at what's left, which in the case of Oregon City is basically what's been built by previously paid system development charges. And we say, okay, how much of that is truly available for growth? And that's the number.
So the value is more the value of facilities in the transportation system as opposed to value of the properties being assessed?
That's right. Yeah, it is, and actually, we've used cost. So it's actually the cost of Oregon City's transportation infrastructure. That's right. That they're being asked to buy into. So the improvement fee...
Commissioner Neely?
I guess it's the wording more than anything else that's confusing me. Reimbursement has kind of a notion that you're giving something back to someone. And who are we giving it back to? I'm kind of confused by the word.
This is the big...
The developers in the company, we got a reimbursement, and they're going to think we're going to get something back to the developer. Is that the case?
No. In the case of a transportation SDC, it's not. The mechanism for reimbursement is, and let me make a couple of distinctions here, because when you have a utility in which there are ratepayers who've built the system with, and I know there's a transportation utility fee, but it hasn't really built any infrastructure yet.
That's for maintenance.
Right. And it's for maintenance. But if you picture a water utility, for example, where ratepayers have issued debt and constructed reservoirs and mains that serve themselves and growth, the reimbursement fee is very clearly designed to reimburse those ratepayers who've built the system and new development has not paid for it at all. So that's the mechanism that they repay the ratepayers. With transportation, and this is also the case with parks, the infrastructure's been built by general tax sources. It's been built by property taxes, in some cases, gas taxes. You know, everybody's already paid for a share of the transportation infrastructure because everybody pays those taxes, you know, some more than others. But generally, you don't have a class of customer to reimburse like you do with ratepayers. All we've got are the folks who've paid SDCs and helped build, helped build the system and the capacity that's available. For the next development to be on par with those who paid the fee before them, they have to be able to, they pay that reimbursement fee. So...
I think I understand.
Yeah, it's a very, nobody's writing checks.
Well, I guess what I don't understand is, I look at South End Road, and I look at a lot of our streets, and I'm wondering where our unused capacity is.
Well, it's in a few of the more recent projects that have been built largely with system development charges. Yeah, and you'll see...
If they've been built by systems development charges, that's already been done.
Yeah.
There are a few, not a whole lot. But for example, Myers Road, the new sections of Myers Road, and there are some other, I'm going to have to think pretty hard, but Warner Parrot Road, Warner Millie, there have been improvements made on those roads. The section of some parts of Beaver Creek Road were constructed with SDCs, not all urban renewal.
This doesn't, but this doesn't constitute a double payment if they've been dealt by SDCs before?
No, it's for the capacity that's left in...
Yeah. They have not been fully paid for. Even though they've been built, you still need to collect the rest of those costs to fully pay for them.
All right, so...
You don't bill to just 100 cars, you bill to 500 cars or whatever.
Okay. In other words, the SDCs have not yet paid up to that particular point.
Right.
Okay.
And you'll see in a minute, the other thing that's striking is, the reimbursement fee cost basis compared to the improvement fee cost basis, you know, it's a drop in the bucket comparatively, because there's not that much unused capacity to buy into. So when we calculate the improvement fee, it starts with a list of projects, and hopefully that's a very comprehensive list, and we go through and identify the growth-related portion of each project, the part of that that's increasing capacity for future users. And that becomes, the sum total of that list becomes our improvement fee basis. So you'll see in a minute, that's a big number. And that's largely what the proposed charge is made up of, is that improvement fee. We add them together, and that's the system development charge. So it's intended to be the share of capacity needed to serve that new development. Some of it's in the existing system, and some of it's in the future system. We worked very closely with the Transportation Advisory Commission, I mean, Committee. And the way we approached that is, we went through a number of policy issues with them, and we write a paper and then talk it through and arrive at a consensus recommendation, and I think all cases, on these policy issues. So I won't spend a lot of time on these, but to sort of click down the recommendations. For the reimbursement fee cost basis, we arrived at what we've already discussed, that the available capacity that has been built with previously paid SDCs is our eligible reimbursement fee cost basis. For the improvement fee cost basis, if a project was going to provide capacity that would be 40% used by growth, then we said 40% of that project cost will be in the improvement fee. So that's basically the approach we took for the improvement fee. We're recommending no change to the city's existing credit policy. When someone builds a project off of the SDC list, and it provides more capacity than their development needs, then the city owes them an SDC credit. And in some cases, the city will cash redeem that credit. And the way that that would happen is, picture a significant development coming in, they build a project, and then as that development builds out, each one of the individual parcels are going to pay a system development charge. That's the cash that can be used to reimburse the initial developer who built the project. So we're not going to use cash generated from all over the city to redeem the credits of that initial developer, only those generated by SDCs in that development. So it protects the city's cash position over time, and protects you from depleting the SDC fund, which is important, because you need the money to spend on this project list. We're recommending that the city change from average daily trips to peak hour trips in the basis of charging. The information's all available from the same source. We have included bike ped improvements, alternative transportation modes in the SDC, and again, it's a very small portion of the fee. We're recommending that development in the regional center and on Malala Avenue, because of its proximity to transit, the density of that development, that residential development in those areas be discounted 10%. The SDCs be discounted, because they generate fewer trips, because things are available there to them locally. And then for non-residential development, that they be, their charge be calculated based on the trip generation statistics of a shopping center or their specific land use, whichever is lower. So, and the reason we've said that is because in these dense mixed-use areas where you have folks parking and maybe making multiple stops to retail establishments or, you know, other shopping, that they behave more like a shopping center than they do a typical neighborhood. So that should provide a benefit to non-residential land uses in those areas.
Mr. Neely?
We've got a letter there here from the Chamber of Commerce. A lot of the development that we see there is redevelopment, too. And some of it's going to be redeveloping other structures in which they already have a capacity. I mean, in terms of whatever's gone there before, one way or another, it's been paid for, part of it. How is that dealt with? Is that dealt with?
If they're not increasing the trip generation over the existing land use, then there would be no SDC charged.
But you're able to subtract that use from the new development?
Yeah.
You're able to compute, calculate that use.
The way you would do that is, let's say you've got, I'm trying to think of a, you've got a restaurant in there existing, and it's going to be redeveloped into an office, an office building, okay? So you would calculate the restaurant's SDC under the current charges and their trip generation, and then you would calculate the new structure, and they would only pay that incremental increase. If there was no increase, there would be no SDC due.
And it's based on, it's based on the current value?
On the current, on the existing charge, that's right. Because you assume that they've paid for, as you said, that amount of capacity at whatever the going rate was at that time. So they don't owe you unless they're demanding more capacity.
And that differential, then, the 10% reduction applies to that differential.
Mm-hmm.
But they don't get the 10%, they don't get the 10% back if they don't...
No, I mean, really, and I've only known of one instance where they even tried to account for that. But in no case are they, do I know of a community that's actually repaid when someone uses less capacity, unfortunately.
No, I understand.
Because you've got to build the capacity for the ever-expanding demand. We also reviewed, the Metro has published a report called Promoting Vibrant Communities with System Development Charges. And we read through that report and drew out their main recommendations and tried to incorporate those into the proposed charges as well. They had to do with full-cost recovery, and you'll see that we're attempting full-cost recovery, looking at locational differences, which we believe we've done by the, our recommendations for the regional center and the Malala Avenue corridor, green design. So they had five major recommendations that we believe we've addressed and incorporated Okay, so the calculation looks like this. And this is a summary of the calculation. We've got background numbers to follow here. But if you look at the, that column on the left, roadway improvements, this is where the largest part of the fee is. The upper part of this table shows the reimbursement fee calculation. We identified about $6.2 million of unused capacity in the existing system. And we divide that by our estimated growth to the end of the planning period, which is 23,448 peak hour trips. And that gives us our reimbursement fee of almost $265 per peak hour trip. And just to give you an idea, a single-family residence generates 1.01 peak hour trips, according to industry data. So this is about what a single-family residence would pay. For the improvement fee calculation, of our total list, which was about $316 million, 158.6 million we've identified as capacity increasing... $158.6 million we've identified as capacity increasing to meet the needs of future users, and that's the improvement fee cost basis, again, divided by our growth in peak hour trips, gives us our proposed improvement fee of $6,765.50. So we add those together, and then another feature of the law is it allows us to recover the cost of administering and accounting for the SDC program, and it allows you to recover the cost of our study. So that's where that administrative cost recovery charge comes in. That allows you to pay for those costs through the SDC. All told, the proposed system development charge, $7,077 per peak hour trip. Again, it'd be a little bit more than that for a single-family residence then. We isolated the bike ped improvements because we're gonna recover those just a little differently. Land uses generate bike ped trips differently than they do vehicle trips, so that's why we've looked at them separately. That total charge, a little over $200 per bike ped trip, and again, we're assuming a single-family residence generates one, so that would be the charge for a single-family residence, and it would vary for different land use types. Now to provide you with some of the gory detail, this shows our trip growth projections. You may have noticed, if you looked at our report that was, that's been available for the last 60 days, our calculated charge was higher than the one we just looked at. A couple of numbers have changed. For one thing, city staff identified a project that they believe realistically wouldn't get done in the planning period, and so that was taken out of the project list. We also noted a couple of inconsistencies in the trip growth projections. They had to do largely with the concept plan areas. Metro's regional traffic model was projecting slower growth in the concept plan areas than the concept plans were, and because we've got all the projects from the concept plans in this list, we needed to include all the growth to make sure we were consistent in the numerator and the denominator. So that increased our denominator, and we also found Metro has a lower peak hour trip assumption for single-family residences than ITE, which is our source material. So we had to make those consistent, so that also drove up the denominator, and so drove the fee down.
Can I ask a question? I mean, we're using, we're using, if somebody challenges, why don't you use Metro's? We have, there's no legal challenge to that, is there?
No, as long as, well, I can't say that with certainty-
No, I don't mean, I didn't affect it, Warren.
For, you know, the way we look at it, because you're gonna be applying the charge using that ITE manual, and that's really the bible for this type of approach, and it's not perfect, but that's how we're proposing the charges be applied, then we can't be dividing by a number that has a different basis, and that's essentially what we were doing, because Metro's traffic model has a peak hour trip assumption for single-family residences that is lower than ITE. So I think we could have had a problem, if we're dividing by one number and applying it by a different number, the city would over-collect in that instance. But as long as we're consistent, then there's no, there's no issue. The reimbursement fee cost basis, we noted about almost $8 million in SDC expenditures of that, about 6.2 is unused capacity still. Obviously, the total cost of the transportation infrastructure is a much bigger number than We've provided you the list of projects, this is the full project list. I won't go, you know, spend time on the list, other than to say, you know, we tried to look at each project individually and make, and make a reasoned engineering judgment about how much of that project is providing capacity that will be needed by a future user. So you'll see different percentages for many of these different projects. Some, in the case of new projects in concept plan areas, allocated 100% to growth.
I think the other point we wanna make on this slide is that there are a number of projects in our capital improvement program and in our transportation system plan that are on the state highway system. And these days with shrinking funds, even in competing for regional funds, it, I think we talked about this earlier, it's helpful if you can bring a local match to the table that's greater than the minimum required. And so in our SDC, we are including on the state highway system project, a 30% local assumption for those projects. And we still only consider the amount that can be, that'll, that will provide for growth rather than the entire project, but, so the incremental part of the, the incremental capacity to serve growth is what we base the cost on, and then we put 30% of that into our SDC.
What are the projects in red? Page 44. Page 44 in this list, it's just the next page. It's Central Point Road Roundtree Drive to UGB, Leland Road McCord to UGB, Redwood Road Holly to UGB, Mulholland Homes to 213.
You know, I bet you those were just roads we flagged internally to look at and shouldn't, there's nothing special about them that I know of, and in fact, I don't have them in red.
They're in your report.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Ignore the red this moment, okay? Commissioner Neely?
I'm gonna be wanting to come back to this draft afterwards, but I do have a couple of questions. As I looked at the list, and I'm sure this is true, these generally are arterials, maybe some large collectors, right? I mean, that's what's on this list. And this list, it comes from our concept plans, it also comes from, I presume, our traffic system plan.
Yes.
That is, all that we have here has come through a formal process of evaluation.
That's right.
And has been evaluated at one level or another, either by, well, probably at one point, us two. I don't, is our transportation system plan up to date?
Yes, what we did was we went through our old list and we updated it, and actually, you saw that, gosh, a few months ago when we adopted that CIP separately, and then the concept plans have gone through a rigorous public process. And then the other thing we wanna point out in this is we, I'm recommending that you eliminate one of the projects that was in the Park Place concept plan, and that's reflected in this, so we will have a slightly different CIP minus one project that we felt like couldn't be constructed.
I noticed that wasn't there.
Yeah.
And so the point was, all of these have been vetted by this commission in one form or another at one point, so these are, there are no new additions by staff, these have actually gone through a process.
And the Transportation Advisory Committee also recommended these. Thank you. Have you completed your?
Almost.
Okay.
We're also showing you the bike ped improvement lists, and then I will complete my material by showing you the comparative transportation system development charges. I always do this hesitantly because, you know, everybody's needs are different and everybody's situation is different, so it's by definition, this is apples and oranges, but I'm sure you're probably interested in what the charges are in some neighboring and other key communities.
We always ask.
Yeah, and I can tell you that Sherwood, which is near at the top of this list, was just updated, and that, they and Tigard and Woodburn have fairly new TSDCs within the last year. West Lynn is currently, they just finished their TSP, and they are undertaking a system development charge update right now, so their number will change, and we rarely see these go down, unfortunately. Silverton also just completed their new TSP and is beginning to update their transportation system development charge, so their number will likely change as well. So that's everything I've got to say.
Okay. I keep getting temperature differential in this room. I'm taking Daphne's spot tonight.
You're not opening the door.
Commissioner Nizita?
I have a question, and this has been my biggest concern with this whole STD project, and I raised it with Ms. Carpower during the work session. Since we have you here tonight, I will raise it with you as well. I really have a concern about the fact that it appears that we levy the systems development charge by parcel, you know, every house gets assessed, doesn't matter if it's a 3,500 square foot house or an 800 square foot house. So we're gonna slap this huge SDC on a little tiny house, one story, which might have a senior in it who takes the bus, and we're gonna levy that same charge roughly on, you know, 3,500 square foot house with three cars, a family of six. Something's not wrong with that, and I know it's a complex equation, and I'm wondering if you, in your experience, have any recommendations to us on how to make it a little, make the apportements. I know it's a complex formula, but I'd really like to figure out some way to make it more equitable, you know, and that the larger properties on a square footage basis or on a value basis, that the costs are fair essentially on that basis.
We can do almost anything like that with data, and one of the problems is, you know, the ITE does, they do a lot of research and surveying and everything, but we don't have good sources to tell us how to make those distinctions within the single-family residential class, and it's, you know, one of the problems is, for all the differences you can cite between, you know, one or two people in a house in a large family, the difference in the charge, it isn't that much when you compare it to the kind of differences you get among commercial customers, and-
I think my point, my point is that it should be.
Yeah, the, well-
The bigger house should be paying more than the little house.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with you, but you need the data to support it, and I guess that the general thought has been that, because most of your development's gonna be single-family residences, it's, you're gonna have to, it's gonna take a lot more administrative time and effort to make sure that you are appropriately charging each individual new customer. You have to provide transportation capacity to a new single-family residence regardless of how many people live in it, and that's probably the biggest thing, is, you know, the system capacity that's needed is driven by the fact that there's a single-family residential home there, not the fact that there's one person or five people, and this is a capacity-based charge. So they, so each unit is buying a share of capacity needed to serve it, and you make distinctions, you know, about the usage typically through a rate. Now, you can't even do that with a transportation rate, but with like a water rate when you've got a consumption rate, that's where you see the benefits to larger families or smaller families. But you could, I mean, you could do it, we're limited in the data that we've got, and all we've got says a single-family residence generates 1.01 peak hour trips, a condo has a lower rate, and a multifamily residential unit has a lower rate, so those are all, those distinctions are made.
Since I have my budget-conscious city manager sitting to my right, let me ask you, I mean, just how much it would take for us to develop that kind of methodology?
Well, I'd have to talk to our associate at DKS, Carl, who would know how to track down that kind of data to calculate that kind of charge, so-
And how much, just with that little process cost of you consulting with your-
Oh, that, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I can tell you how much that would, that would cost after I can talk to him.
Okay.
So I wanna add to that, though, too, is-
And if Nancy tells me to.
If a development comes along that is very confidently not gonna provide the trip generation that is cited by the ITE tables, there is a clause in our resolution that says the city engineer may use alternative data when in the city engineer's opinion the alternative data are more reliable and realistic for a particular development than are the trip factors set forth in Exhibit 1. And so that kind of language in the resolution allows for us to have, to make decisions that are based on good alternative data.
Yeah. Here's my, you raised that at the work session, and I appreciate that. My, I guess my concern with that, however, is the potential for that type of case-by-case analysis to place an incredible burden on you.
We ask the developer to provide the data.
Okay, I mean, I prefer a way to just do it by a formula or methodology, if, I mean, if it's feasible and it doesn't cost an outrageous amount of money.
I think it's extremely important to make sure you're being fair and equitable across the population, and there are also large houses that have two people in them, there are small houses that have lots of people in them. It would be difficult to rank population with, and trip generation with square footage of a residence.
Another issue you gotta run into here is, and you can spend a lot of money, it's kinda like chasing your tail, the size of the house doesn't necessarily guarantee the trip generation from it. The life of that house and the impacts, too, it could go through several changes of generations in there. So I understand your scenario and your concern, but the data may give you something that you don't wanna see. I can mention the apartment complex, and, you know, those things are 700 to 900 square feet. I know families of six in those, and watching them go to and from, the trip generation coming out of a few of those places are far exceeding the 9.6 that we have in there. So, you know, you'll always get a report back that could be quite shocking. I know when you're confined, especially if you have any type of family in a smaller unit, sometimes you spend a lot of time going to other places.
Nancy, did you, excuse me, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and then you're in a box of having to track, or at least you should, if it's based on family size initially, and someone sells and another, and another type of owner moves in, you don't wanna have to be tracking that kind of thing.
Nancy, on the slack recommendations, you didn't talk about number one, did you?
I haven't gotten to those yet.
You're, okay.
We haven't completed the slide showing you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Neely, then.
A few, well, maybe one now. Are we done with the presentation, or, Nancy, you're coming back up? It was mentioned, so I'll just bring it up now. You mentioned the city center in Mulholland having a different, a different chart.
Different data.
Different data. Is that, is that basically because these are areas that we want to stimulate redevelopment in, or is it for other reasons?
It's, well, we would like to stimulate development along those quarters because we will-
Yes.
-see some trip reduction based on that kind of land use in the regional center area and along the transit corridor, Mulholland, 7th Street.
Right.
So it's based on land use, anticipated trip generation, which is something we desire to reduce trips, but it's based on the anticipated-
Type of-
Trip generation reductions.
Okay, and we, is there reasons that would not apply to Beaver Creek between Mulholland and 213? I mean, it's the same, to some degree, we're looking for that kind of redevelopment to occur there as well.
We don't have the bus service on Beaver Creek Road that we have on Mulholland and 7th. 7th and Mulholland really is our transit route, it's our main transit corridor. If we found that we are increasing transit service where we can really rely on trip reduction because of that, then we would want to look at that in the future, perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's continue.
Okay, thank you. So we had, in addition to the Transportation Advisory Committee working through all of the issues, we also invited quite a few people from the development community to an open house in February, wanted to make sure that the information we're coming up with was shared with the community. And then, come to think of it, Mr. Patterson and I also attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting last week to discuss it with our chamber. But a number of questions came up, and we tried to summarize them. All of the, the summary of the entire meeting is in your packet, but I would say maybe sort of the more common questions were, will growth really occur in 20 years? Well, nobody really knows that, that's a big crystal ball. I mean, we're- I mean, we've seen this nosedive in the last 12 months, but whether or not growth occurs or not, we're also not going to receive any revenues, and the equations don't change. It's the same projects for the same amount of growth. Whether or not they occur fast or slow, it doesn't impact the charge. Will the projects really get constructed? Well, if we're collecting the money, we should be constructing the projects. Do projects really match projected trip growth? This is one where we relied on Metro's model and all the modeling that was done when we adopted the concept plans, as well as our transportation system plan, to estimate what kind of growth we're going to need to accommodate. That growth then was modeled into the transportation system, and those come from Metro's population and employment models. And it was for a 20-year plan. Why a 20-year plan rather than a 5 to 10 plan? It averages everything out over time. It could be then in five years, you build a $2 million project, and then the next 10 years, you build $1 million. It makes sense to try to average it out over 20 years so that everybody pays as equal, as fair amount of a share as possible to the transportation system. And then there was some concerns that if our SDCs were too high, then it's less enticing to build a home in Oregon City because your upfront costs are so high, the developers may not make as much in the long run, and so therefore they may go to other communities to build homes or development. And so we did try to look at comparative SDCs, and not only transportation SDCs, but also the other four SDCs, and you need to consider the whole amount. And then it really just comes down to where you want to build. And we still have to construct our transportation system to serve the growth. And the one thing we talked about is if we really wanted to reduce the number of projects, we could talk about reducing our level of service. We could have more congestion in more parts of the city, and then we wouldn't need as much, as many projects. And that's something we could discuss in our next transportation system plan update. So in our implementation of these numbers, we were looking at two components here. One is the road component, and one is the bike-ped component. We did get a request from the Home Builders Association if we could possibly ramp up the cost because it's significantly more than our old $1,900. We typically use the single-family residence, but for commercial, it's all proportional. We wanted, we realized we needed to recognize this very, very large increase, although fact of the matter is we're actually behind on updating our system development charges. There are a number of reasons why we probably delayed it by four or five more years than we should have, but the fact of the matter is we are behind, so we can't delay too much. And this is probably one of the toughest times to be changing your system development charge, given the economic climate. And nobody realizes it more than your staff that it's something we need to be extremely sensitive to. And we want to, we want Oregon City to continue to see economic health, not more bankruptcies. And so we won't be, we're not going to ignore that. One of the questions came about was, what about subdivisions that have already been approved? These are ones where the finance plans have already been developed, and to increase the upfront costs of developing those individual lots excessively basically puts their finance plan in the tank. And then we also were asked to compare them. We already talked about comparing the SDCs.
So the answer is if the development plan's been approved, the new SDC will not apply?
Well, we'll get to the recommendations in just one moment. So the ramp up...
Suspense, she's building up suspense.
I know a guy goes to the end of the book.
You want to go to the end of the book, Doc? Well, you know, we've got to cover all this stuff first. We talked about how our SDC is probably very artificially low. We also need to consider that if you ramp up the charge too slowly, well, by golly, you're going to have a lot of growth occurring, and you're not going to be building the infrastructure to accommodate that growth. So there is a balancing act you need to figure out. And I still think that safety improvements, we need to acknowledge those and not wait if we know we have safety issues. So what our recommendations are, and this has been, I've spent quite a bit of time visiting with various developers. We've talked amongst staff. We've talked to the commission. We've talked to the Chamber of Commerce. And this is what I'll recommend to you tonight. It's your decision. I recommend that with the new road component, we implement it in two equal increments. So starting 30 days from adoption of this resolution, you would pay for half of it, which is approximately $3,500 per trip. And then in January 2011, it would go to the full $7,077 per trip, recognizing there's also, we're also recommending annual adjustments for inflation, and we wouldn't ignore those in that time period. We would include those in the time period. We are recommending the 10% reduction for residential in the regional center and in the Molalla 7th Street corridors. And then I've got the wording, I pored over that memo, and I still got the wording wrong, John. But there's a difference between the residential and the commercial. For the commercial, we would recommend using the shopping center data rates or the base use, whichever's less. So it makes sense to use a shopping center factor there because you're going to not just go to one place, you'd probably go to several when you're in those areas.
Could you repeat that again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I say it?
You said it, too, yeah.
Okay.
Or I don't know if I could say it better.
So for commercial...
So for commercial, you would pay the ITE rate for your particular land use or the shopping center ITE rate, whichever is less.
Okay, okay.
Right.
So it'll help, there are some high-trip generating business types that this should really help in that, in those areas.
In those areas, right. And then we are recommending that the bike-ped component become effective 30 days after adoption of the resolution. There would be no ramping up of that. This is a, this is a brand-new component. It's not one that we're increasing dramatically, and we feel like it's an important one to bring forward to get going on some multimodal projects.
On the bike-ped piece, can those monies be used, for example, on Myers Road, for example, where we don't have sidewalks, and we can actually start applying to SDCs to areas that don't have sidewalks that are already built?
If the project's on the list.
If the project's on the list.
Yes. And then we wanted to address those properties that have existing land use or limited land use decisions. We have a number of subdivisions that have been approved in the last two or three years, and they still have many empty lots, many of which came to a dead grinding halt in the last 18 months, 12 months, six months. It gets worse and worse. And I think we have about 700 of those lots in the city already. And I recommend that we increase it 15%. I think it's important to increase it something to acknowledge the fact that we have a higher need, but to recognize that this is, we are in extenuating economic times, and they have business plans for those subdivisions, and it's, we need to respect those. And those particular lots, I'm not recommending we let them go forever, but I'm recommending that it's essentially approximately a four-year grace period on increasing it to the new road component. I'm also recommending that, should the economy...
Commissioner Nusseth.
I'm sorry. So you're saying that folks that already have a land use approval would still be, will still have an increased charge against them?
15%.
They didn't know when they applied for their land use approval, or did they, that there was a prospect of this extra charge on the horizon?
They didn't know exactly, but I think there's always, that possibility exists in communities, that people will be reviewing their transportation system, any, any system development charges. And particularly every five years, many communities do so.
And how many properties would this apply to, do you know?
I think there are about 700 lots.
700 lots.
Mm-hmm. The other thing that was, what I'm recommending is that the city commission, after two years, if it looks like the economy's turning around and you would so desire to increase that charge earlier, we bring it up, and preferably in some sort of a public hearing, that you would consider, you might consider raising it sooner than four years. And then for lots of record, which I'll look to the city attorney to help me with that definition, we would have the same effect, the same 15% increase, but we wouldn't give the full four years because those lots of record have been around for a while, and it's not the same kind of imminent business plans you have with these subdivisions. So I'd like to just wrap up the presentation, and then I wanted to go through the packet. What you have in your packet is, of course, the staff report, which has, I slightly revised the recommendations from what I wrote last week in your staff report. And then it also has the report that FCSG produced as a result of the study. And it has some of the public invitation, the invitation to come to the public meeting, and it also had a notice that was sent out, a 90-day notice of system development charge modifications that we are required by statute to post. And then it also includes a summary of the meeting we had with the community on February 23rd and the list of folks that attended.
And you also have a new, a substitute resolution?
Yes, and I will get to that.
Updated.
Commissioner Nusseth.
Quick question for Mr. Kribis. Is an SDC a land use regulation?
I like easy ones.
So at your desks tonight, I left three pieces of paper. One is changes, there are two of them, that are changes to sections of the resolution. And one of them is a short, short one that includes the reference to including the 10% reduction for residential in the mixed-use downtown and the mixed-use corridor one and general commercial zones fronting 7th Street and Molalla Avenue corridor. And I would like to modify that to say what we talked about tonight. Rather than just being 10% reduction or shopping center, it would be 10% reduction for residential and then the lesser of the shopping center or the trip generation for that particular land use in the downtown, the mixed-use downtown zone and along the mixed-use corridor one and general commercial fronting 7th Street and Molalla Avenue corridor. Then the second item you have is some slight modifications that are made to the resolution based on the recommendations I provided tonight. And so they, they say what we just talked about. And then you have the actual resolution that has those changes within it.
Questions about that?
And I also will give you some letters, but those can probably wait until you have people come up that have been turned in tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Neely?
We have this ramp up, but it's, you gave some dates, but it sounds like it's roughly 18 months between, assuming that we're going to pass this pretty soon, is 18 months between the one increment and the next. Is that correct?
Right, for new, for new development.
Right. I'd like to suggest to you that you apply the same kind of ramp up to the 15% increase. That is seven and a half percent that corresponds to the existing approved development. So it sort of parallels that.
Sure.
It sort of makes sense, I think.
Say that again.
Okay, you've got, the increase in the SDCs are going to be...
For the lots of record, or existing land use?
No.
Nope?
Yes, but I was going to say, what we're talking about in terms of the 18-month applies to the, to the increase in the SDCs for all new development. I was saying to apply that same ramp up to the 15% increase on approved developments that are approved. So you got 30 days after this is approved, it goes up seven and a half percent. Subsequently, I think you said it was January 2011, it goes up another seven and a half percent.
That's something for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, well, that's my suggestion.
You also have a public hearing.
Right, I know.
Oh, yeah. I'm getting ahead of time. Okay.
We do. However, we've been sitting for two hours. Do you need a break, commissioners? Would you like to take a minute's break, or you want to go right on?
I'd like a break.
Okay.
I'll take that as a break.
All right. We are...
And there are a couple people who've asked some questions about the lot of record issues. In particular, you know, the concern is there are a number of subdivisions that were developed recently but haven't been built on. And as you know, the systems development charge get assessed at the time of building permit, so they're essentially unbuilt lots that are set on. The question is, you know, do they come in under the existing land use and limited land use decisions or lot of record? What I wanted to do is talk about what a lot of record means. Our code at 1704-360 defines a lot of record to mean a lot or parcel that has been legally recorded in the office of the county recorded by deed or contract to sale prior to the enactment of an ordinance or regulation by reason of which the lot or parcel no longer meets the dimensional or area requirements of the city. So essentially, a lot of record is one that was legal when it's established, and there's state law that says, you know, essentially, once a lot, always a lot, but it doesn't meet our current code. And that's what a lot of record is. So if you're talking about a subdivision that was divided six months ago, two years ago, five years ago, unless there's been a zone change or a change to the zoning regulations that affect the area requirement or the dimensional standards, it's not a lot of record. So it's only if you have a lot that's been recorded and it no longer meets current city standards for dimension or area. Does that make sense?
Oh, okay.
That's why we asked the city attorney to explain that.
Yes, thank you. Questions? Okay, let's go on, then. You ready to open the public hearing? All right, the public hearing is open.
Well, no, I need to ask a question that follows that thing. We had a discussion of the 15%, okay? And I understood that that was applying to approved, approved...
Land use.
Land use and...
Limited land use.
But, but to also include lot of record. Now, if the zoning no longer applies, why would we want to, why would we want to extend that 15% to a lot of record that in fact is a recent land use approval?
And that gets into some policy questions that the city engineer may be able to answer better than I can. You know, I, there could be some reasons to do it legally, you can do it. What I want to do is, what's the distinction between, you know, the 15% recent land use decision, limited land use decisions, and lot of record?
Yeah.
I think there could be many situations where the people have had lots, and they're not going through a new land use process, but they've had these lots, and then all of a sudden, it's going to cost much more to develop them. We're just saying, hey, everybody, guess what? We're increasing our SDCs by 15% now, and in January of 2011, they're going to go up to seven, to the component one amount. And so it's letting people that maybe were waiting to develop their lot of record to do so under old charges.
But a lot of record would not necessar, I mean, it would still have to go through a land use.
Not necessarily.
Okay. But, but can we confine to those that would have to go through a land use as opposed to those that wouldn't?
Well, by definition, a lot of record is a legal lot. So it can be built on so they can come in.
All right, all right.
So essentially, you're thinking of this as incentive to build in the short term?
Or just to give them...
A break.
Give them a break.
Break, yeah. Which is also an incentive.
That's a good way of putting it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, back to, we opened the public hearing, and we have a number of people who signed up to speak, and you may come up and please give your name and the city inside of whose boundaries you live. You'll be able to speak to us for up to three minutes. And I would like to read first, I've been asked to read testimony of Nancy Walters, who was here for urban renewal. was here for urban renewal commission meeting. She is a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, and so I'd like to read this on her behalf. "I was involved in working with the city's Transportation Advisory Committee and the city's experts in developing the basis for SDC charges. We worked very diligently over a period of about six months to understand and discuss various aspects and trade-offs involved in the calculation. The resulting formula was derived through unanimous consensus. I also support this formula because it responds to the comments I heard from many citizens while attending more than 40 public hearings relating to proposed development actions. It is important to the citizens that development pay for itself and this is reflected in the proposed SDC rate restructure. Thank you for your consideration, Oregon City resident Nancy Walters." And then coming up to the mic, please, come in, choose if you would for, to expedite the movement, Steve Smelzer and Mark Epperson, followed by Mark Andrus and Paul Edgar. Is Mark Epperson here? Okay. Thank you, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Steve Smelzer. I live in Happy Valley, Oregon. I've been building homes in and around Oregon City since 1970, 39 years. I'm here and I'm opposed to this additional tax on new home buyers. I understand that this tax is an easy way for jurisdictions to raise money because most citizens don't even know they're affected by it until they become new home buyers or until they come and ask me to build them a new home. And you'd be surprised at how angry a lot of people are when I show them the costs and show them where some of those fees are going. They sit home now, tonight, and they say, sure, tax the newcomer, knowing that, not knowing that maybe two years from now, they're going to decide to buy a new home. All of a sudden, they're the newcomer. And maybe they've lived in Oregon City their whole life and they've already paid all these costs their whole life. Why should they have to rebuy into the system? Because they want to upgrade their family to a new home that's probably much more energy efficient than the house they're living in and better for the environment. When I started building houses in 1970, we didn't even need building permits. We built house after house without getting permits. Cost to government in our cost of housing was zero. By 1978, I was paying about 2% of my sales price to government for whatever fees they charged. Stayed in the 2% and 3% range, or a little bit under 3%, up till about 1994. And then it seems like things have gone out of control. By 2008, I paid 8% of the cost, sales price of my house to government. If this goes into effect, I'll be up around 10%. And it seems to me the government has to decide someday if they can't just keep taxing and taxing. My construction costs on a typical 1400 square foot house since 1978 have multiplied 3.6 times. Whatever cost me in 1978, my hard costs are 3.6 times what they were then. My land costs are up about seven times what they were in 1978. Building permits are up 21 times. Just seems that that's something that's gone haywire. What I concern, am concerned with, and I have typically over the years built homes for first-time home buyers, and I get concerned with these cost increases, with the affordability for my kids to buy houses. And I have four kids and hope, thankfully, they're all in homes now, but it was a struggle for a couple of them because of the cost of housing. I just wonder how their children are going to be able to afford houses if government keeps taking more and more. And when is it going to stop? Our economy in our country right now is on its knees. The home building industry, my own business, is struggling to survive. All that an increase like this will do is put another nail in a coffin to push us down. Builders don't pay these taxes. The buyers pay them. And you can call them what you want, you can call them systems development keys, you can call them reimbursing somebody for some past expenses. It's a tax. I think we need to go back, and it's going to be a hard thing to ever get turned around, but to the way that public leaders did it in the past. And they said, if it needs to be done, if people need to do it or want it done, then everybody should pay. If streets need to be built, then we've got to figure out a way for everybody to pay, not just the new home buyer. Because what, what do you do with a new home buyer that's lived through all his life, paid? He wants a new home for his family and he builds a new home. Somebody else, five other people come into Oregon City, buy existing houses, they don't have to pay that tax. How is that equitable or fair? And I just urge you to think long and hard and to vote no on this. And if you are going to vote yes, this ramping up, I agree with ramping up, but having two tiers, somebody has a subdivision right now. And I understand that if you have a subdivision, some lots, you don't want to increase the cost of those in your plan. But if I come in next summer, or this summer, with a little project and want to develop a little piece of property and put a couple of houses on it, why should I be at an economic disadvantage because I didn't have my subdivision done today? I'm going to build those houses, say, next summer or next winter, and I got to compete with, I got to pay the full thing and compete with somebody else, going to pay $2,168. That's not right.
Okay, thank you.
You've got to make it a fair playing field. Thank you.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt. We're having a problem with our timer over here.
Yeah, I was looking at the clock.
Yeah, the batteries are working, but for some reason, the receiver isn't timing out the three minutes.
Okay, I'll have to do my hand. Mr. Smelzer got, I think, an extra bit, but...
Sorry about that.
So we'll do the best we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Mark Epperson. I do live in Oregon City, have lived here since 1961. I've seen this town change a lot, many times for the better, sometimes for the worse. With the economic conditions we're seeing today, now's not the time. People are barely getting by. The unemployment level in Oregon is now over 10%. Don't be raising taxes now. Now's not the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mark Andrus and Paul Edgar.
Hi, I'm Mark Andrus. I live in Clackamas County, Oregon. I echo what everybody's said so far, and I agree too, that now's not the time for additional fees, additional SDCs, additional taxes. But if it's something that you do decide that to move forward with, I do appreciate the staff working with us over the last couple of weeks, you know, to come up with some, you know, reduced staged-in costs. So we do appreciate that. And if, if it is voted on and approved, we would appreciate the staged-in program.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Paul Edgar. I'm the Kenema Land Use Chair. We have a lot of senior citizens in Kenema. Whenever we don't pay for new road construction or needed infrastructural improvements that would be addressed by an SDC, and we somehow have to come back and buy it or pay for it, oftentimes it comes back on to everyone in the community and particularly it hits hard on senior citizens. Many of these people have their existing houses, they would like to pass them on to the next generation. This is a basic dignity situation and you could be taxing them or feeing them right out of their homes. Is that fair? Are they responsible or should they be held responsible for new development? I, as an individual, I, on one statement I will make, I support the SDCs. I think that they are fair. I read the Kitzhopper study that said that SDCs or impacts of local government is about $50,000 per home. And if we don't charge for some of this money, who does pick up the tab for that? And it really ends up coming back on everyone else. And am I responsible? Should I be held responsible? Who gains? All I turn around and say is, is that this is fair. It may be understating what SDC should be, impact fees, but let's think about everyone else. There's a lot of families out there going with limited incomes, hand to mouth, in their home, and you're going to, if we don't charge this stuff, we're going to have to end up putting it back to them in added taxes, and I don't think that that's fair.
Thank you. Next speakers, Michael Robinson and Ernie Platt.
Good evening, Mayor Norris, members of the commission. Michael Robinson, I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Mark Andrus. My testimony is very brief. We support the revised resolution and the revised section 3D. We appreciate the time that Nancy took to talk this through with us and come up with proposed language. And if you're going to adopt this, we urge that you adopt it as the way she's proposed. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Ernie Platt, representing the Home Builders Association, Metro Portland, offices in Lake Oswego. I live in Damascus. First, I too want to compliment the city, particularly the staff, Nancy, Kathy and her staff, and also John, your consultant, with the assistance they've offered, explaining everything we asked them in a very thorough and logical manner. They've been a great assistance to be able to understand what is quite a complicated process. I think I'm only stating the office, obvious and somewhat repeating what's been said before, but these are terrible economic times we're in. And that's largely what's driven this discussion about trying to find a way to phase this in. I'll characterize this just a little bit differently. The ultimate fee that's proposed, combined transportation and bicycle, is $7,279. It's presently 1884 or 1885. That is a 390% increase. Mind-boggling. But I understand what the need is, I understand the concerns, we need a transportation system. This timing is terrible and it's, dealing with this issue has been left too long, but here we are. Staff has proposed and made a recommendation that you've heard this evening. I too support the recommendation they're making. I think it's workable and doable and it addresses the concerns we've heard with respect to existing lots and properties that are in the land, have the land use approval process but haven't yet proposed to be built upon yet. So it's workable, it would work, and I support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the last of the cards I have. Is there anyone else who has come that forgot to turn it in?
May I pause?
Thank you very much. I would like to close the public hearing.
Before you do that, you have a letter at your place that's been submitted by Amber Holbeck to the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to indicate that...
I would like to ask a question of Amber Holbeck, if she could, would come up specifically on the line.
She's not here.
Actually, I think she had to go, that's why she wanted to submit this.
I did read the letter and I don't know if anybody else here can direct their, their concerns to this particular letter given to the measure of redevelopment that would occur. That is, we have an existing use, we redevelop, it's another use. You, you look at what the capacity, what is or is currently on the, on the, on the non-redeveloped land, you then look at the capacity on the developed land and you compute the difference. And then it, and if you're in our corridors of interest, you get the 10% reduction as well on that. And of course, the chamber, I guess the, I don't know if another representative of the chamber could actually respond to whether this is sufficient to address the issue expressed in this letter or not.
What Ms. Holbeck had indicated to me, again, the Government Economic Affairs Committee did recommend to the Chamber Board that they support the recommendations as put forward. I think at the board level, I think there's still some confusion in regards to the redevelopment side of things. And it's not that they're opposed or in favor, they just would like to get more explanation exactly what, how that works with redevelopment. So until that's done, I think is the issue.
And did, were they, were they looking at the recommendations that we have tonight or the prior?
Yes, that's, Ms. Crushour and I had gone to the Government Economic Affairs Committee last week and did present the detail through them last night.
Okay, Commissioner Nusita.
On this letter, it was interesting to me, and I, it's too bad that Ms. Holbeck is not here because I wanted to ask her about the letter also. Was there any discussion on the board level or at the committee level on specific suggestions on how to address the concerns in the letter? Because it seems rather open-ended and I would probably be quite receptive to the concern if there were some specific suggestions on how might, you know, proceed to address...
I'm not familiar with the board concern. I was unable to attend the board meeting on Monday. At the Government Economic Affairs Committee, the issue did come up, Ms. Crushour did explain that, and they did go on to support the recommendation. So, you know, I think it's just a matter of getting with the board and walking back to these issues so they understand how that works.
So likely, they didn't have a resource person that was able to help.
We didn't have any city folks there for the board meeting.
Commissioner Neely?
Maybe a specific example of one thing I know, one thing I think occurred, it was before I was on the commission, but I heard a lot of talk at the coffee shop I would go to, had to do with SDCs that were proposed to be charged, I think it was to the Wine Stock. And those, I think there was a roll back at one point or another, so I presume some kind of evaluation was made and found out that perhaps the SDCs were, were too high. You indicated that people can come, specific concerns can be brought to you and you can look at them. I was wondering if you could discuss a little bit more what those kinds, what those mechanisms have been in the past.
Just a moment, may I close the public hearing? Because you've gotten off the letter, I think. All right. Public hearing is closed.
And I repeat my question without repeating it.
That's fine.
The, the kinds of requests that come in, they're, believe it or not, there aren't that many, but I can probably give a better example with the Coffee Rush building. We based it more on the number of parking spaces and the amount of turnover that we could imagine happening within the parking spaces rather than the actual square footage of the fast food restaurant that Coffee Rush is categorized as. So in other words, you can just get so many people coming and going. And then I imagine it was similar for the Wine Stock based on the number of parking lot. It can vary depending on the situation.
The Wine Stock issue, I'm somewhat familiar, and I don't remember all the details, I could look back, had to do with a definitional question of what it was. And when they were first proposing it, I think there was some confusion on our part exactly what the operations would be. I know that Mr. Grantlaw and I had gone down there and visited with them and after that looked at the definition differently, and that's why theirs dropped down. I just don't remember all the specifics of it at this point.
But, you know, this all takes staff time and frequently charge fees. Do we, on this kind of request, actually, are fees charged to look at those issues?
No.
So here, just essentially making sure you got your definitions right and seeing how the, how the system operates.
Yes, and there is a time clause in there, and I probably should have looked it up before tonight. I've thought about, is it 18 months, five years? For the timing for the redevelopment to get the credits for the previous use?
I don't know.
With Wine Stock, it was a good one.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think that helps. And knowing also that there's not a fee charged.
Contrary to popular belief, we don't charge for everything.
Contrary to popular belief, we don't charge for everything.
Can I throw out a recommendation for discussion?
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm going to suggest a ramp up over three years incrementally, and that would apply then to the 15% also on the approved land uses and lots of record, incrementing them up at 5%. So you'd have the first ramp up occur, say, within the 30 days, the next one 18 months thereafter, and then the next one 18 months after that as well. The economic conditions are difficult. We would hope, I think, over a three-year period to see a major turnaround. I don't feel quite as confident about that occurring within a two-year period, but if this would help in terms of development in the area so that we would see a rate of development that would help us, I think this might, I think this might, as we have it here, might direct attention to other communities for development, but I think if we do it in a extended ramp-up period, I think that might be somewhat beneficial.
So you're talking about a jump then, after the 15%, still to January 2011?
No, I'm talking about, you may regard that January 1st, 2011, as the first 18-month period. The next one would be 18 months later.
After that.
Yeah, essentially, you've got a year and a half ramp up. I'm suggesting a three-year ramp up.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Neely, Mr. Kabizman informed me that the answer to your question regards timeframe is a five-year period, in which we'll look at those issues.
The five-year rate?
Oh, the question, yeah, okay, okay.
Or which question?
I think it was a different question.
Yeah, it was a different question.
SEC credits.
It wasn't what I was talking about.
Okay. All right, SEC credits. Okay, that was not a motion, just a suggestion for discussion.
It was a suggestion. I'll put a motion, but I've got a couple of points of other discussion.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I don't think they have to be dealt with in this particular resolution, but I'm going to bring it up anyhow because we have an appendix. And I took some time actually to look at these lists, because it's been a long time since I've actually looked at the list of all the projects we've had. Two of them concern me. One more than the other, but if you look on page, boldface, page 43 of our packet, and we have the listing of the projects, we have a couple of city projects that are listed at 100% city-funded responsibilities. I don't think it's appropriate. The first one is in that second block, BR2.
BR3.
No, BR2.
Oh, okay.
It says Beaver Creek, Clermont Drive to Henrici Road. Is that all within the urban growth boundary? It is not. We have our urban growth boundary does not extend to Henrici Road, no. And therefore, I do not think we should have 100% of the city responsibility for that segment as written.
I can come back to you with that, Commissioner Neely, but I think that that's already been pro-rated out for the county share, but we have to look at that.
Yeah, we need to have that, and I understand, I understand, going towards the bottom block, which is PP3 I'm looking at, we've got Holly Lane up to Maple Lane Road at 100%. That is not all within the urban growth boundary either, and I think we need to take a very close look at the 100% city responsibilities.
Well, actually, all of them are 100%.
No, 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 no. You've got 30% and everything.
Well, no, that's just all there are, they are. It's just that first section is the only one.
Well, that's right, but I'm still looking at them. These are the ones that are, these are, the ones that aren't 100%, it's because they don't extend all the way through the city lands. These down here, it's not the blocks they're in, it's the fact that they are not all within the city. And I don't, if it's not all within city, unless our urban growth boundary changes before we do any of these projects, then they should not be regarded as 100% city.
Actually, could you explain that? Because the ones that are 30% in that first list, most of those are inside the city. So I'm not sure that his explanation's, I don't understand his explanation.
The point that Commissioner Neely is making is that a portion of the length of the project Beaver Creek Road, Clermont to Henrici Road is outside the UGB, and therefore, we shouldn't be constructing it.
Right, I understand that one. Yeah, but what about all of the others? And all the others are at 100% too, except for those in that first section.
Oh, those are, those are the ODOT projects in the first section, and...
Oh, so those are all shared?
Yeah, the Highway 213, right.
So when reality hits, and it's actually time to build these, there could be partnership funding, but right now you don't see it? Is that why they're listed at 100%?
For the ODOT projects?
No, the ones below the line.
Well, the first one could be dealt with.
I think what Commissioner Neely is suggesting is we shouldn't be building a road outside the UGB, and we shouldn't include that cost in this.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't build a road. I'm saying we should seek a partner. And in the case, I mean, that's easily dealt with in BR2, because a lot of them you have that way. You don't say to Henrici Road, do you say to UGB boundary. Now, that would apply to BR2. BR2, you could just say to UGB boundary, and you can cover it at 100%.
Right.
Now, the other one, I think, is a little bit problematic, because one end is within a UGB boundary, and the other end is within a UGB boundary, but there's a segment in between that's not. We don't have all, we don't have all of Holly Lane, yeah.
Just to push back, that's how that road would never get built.
I understand that, but, I understand that, but we have to, we have to seek county cooperation on that piece.
So Commissioner Neely, I'd be happy to look at the cost estimates that were done for both of those projects and find out, clarify that these are, need to be revised or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm saying, if you say they're not, they don't need to be revised, I would say the 100% does have to be, should be revised. So I think the need's there.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I have another question. It's just out of curiosity. You have, in the second page, R10, it's a piece that's dear to me, Washington Street 12, Washington Street 12 street intersection. I assume the monies that you're indicating there are for signalization.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question about methodology or comments on Commissioner Neely's? Is this time-sensitive? Does this need to be passed this evening?
No, we can continue, or you closed the public hearing. I wouldn't mind being, bringing back to a nice and tidy and clean resolution anyway, especially if you're, depending on how you land on Commissioner Neely's suggestions. And then I would like to make sure my correction on the 10% in shopping center is perfectly clear in the resolution to you as well, but we could...
I know, I know.
We would like to have it nailed down if we could.
Yeah, it's really the second time we've heard it, so it's becoming way clearer to me, and you made a bunch of changes, and I'm kind of wrestling with those impacts in my head. And I think, I'd like a chance to wrestle with Commissioner Neely's suggestion as well, because as, ramping up is actually attractive, but, yeah, it's...
Okay. How many lots do we have that are under?
It's 700.
700.
And I know, and that's actually just one development, isn't it?
That's the 15% for five years, four years.
Yeah, it's one development, right?
No, no, there are a number of subdivisions.
There's a number of subdivisions within that that are coming in quickly?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay, okay.
It could be that a very small percentage of that ever takes advantage of this, a very small percentage.
Anyway.
Yeah, I understand that too.
Yeah. So may I just ask you why you didn't, what was the example of the three-year ramp in? Somebody else gave it that. I can't remember whether he did, John did or not, but what do you see as a downside for, or why didn't you propose that kind of ramp up? And I know the home builders are here too, so perhaps you've put your heads together.
I guess I felt like today, today we pay approximately $2,000. The future will be approximately $7,200. To break it into three intervals is $1,000 or so between the two, two to three years, and it starts introducing a fair amount of more administrative work and record-keeping in Eden, and I didn't see where that three-year for that $5,000 or so, entire increase was significant enough to spread it over three years.
And what if the effective date for the endpoint were moved back a year, to 2012 instead of 2011? Even under your scenario?
With the two?
Rather than, yeah, to wait for the economy to improve, et cetera?
I would say that if development isn't happening because of the costs or because of the economy, we're not going to need, have the need for the transportation system improvements anyway, while we are, and I would be, I would say that this is not something that, I would say I'd be flexible for the commission. I don't think, I think it's, like I said, it's not a huge significant amount, either way you look at it. And depending on how development occurs, we'll either bring money in or we won't bring money in, and...
Yeah. One thing I'm so delighted to see, we've talked, talked a little bit about trying to target SDCs, or give incentives, I guess, for redevelopment in the areas that we've targeted for redevelopment, like the regional center and Seventh Street and Molotov. So I'm really pleased with that. And I think, on the whole, it's a very thoughtfully put-together process and methodology. I think, of course, the thing that gives us, I'm sure, all angst, and every person who spoke addressed it, is the economy and how we can't see into the future, and how this would, how this will impact our development. I mean, the majority of the time when people speak to us, it's growth should pay for itself, and this essentially is trying to do that. Of course, we're questioning little pieces of it, which I don't think are going to make very much difference, but hopefully we'll have a clean document when we maybe consider it again, because I would like, I would really like to have another meeting a couple of weeks to really analyze it, now that I understand it better than I did before. Other questions and comments? Commissioner Nocita?
I'm in favor of continuing this, since we are not in a particular rush, and I would even go so far as to say that, and I don't know if I'm risking wrath of any staff here, I'd like to have another, schedule this at another work session as well.
We'll have one, we'll have one the week after our next meeting, which would delay us.
So it's just a question if you want to have it in one meeting or two meetings from now? That's just a proposal.
Why don't we see how we feel about it in two weeks? And, well, you know, we have to, we have to either have a decision or not.
If we're going to have another work session, I'd like to know what to come prepared, present.
Yeah.
We don't want to go through this again, I don't.
You've essentially got the one change that's been recommended, and I guess that's what could be taken.
And I will say, the process to me is working, because, as the mayor said, I mean, in all our minds, I mean, this is really complicated stuff, and there's a lot to digest, and it's been really helpful to have your explanations, to have our experts', you know, explanations, to help us parse it all out and, you know, get our heads around it. So the reason I say what I'm saying is, I know I'm asking for a lot of thoroughness here, but I think the subject matter commands that thoroughness, and that's just why I'd like to see it handled then.
For work, I don't think I need a work session on it, if there aren't a great deal of changes between now and then. What I would like to see, though, is, again, for staff to think about Commissioner Neely's recommendation, different kind of ramp up and the ramifications. I mean, you gave us a response, but you might have two weeks to think about it as well, and then perhaps clean up of those little things and see if that makes any difference, and clean resolution. But I don't, I'm not sure that if we talk about it more, that's going to, unless there's new information to be added, I think it's just, I need to digest and put together the pieces myself, because of its importance and its complexity. So what about the rest of you? Commissioner Smith?
I'm kind of on the same page. I'm not sure that I need a work session, but I do think I like the idea of looking at the different timelines, and I think you, Nancy, answered the reasoning for the two years rather than the three years, and that makes a lot of sense too, but maybe if we can kind of get a better idea of what that looks like. But I don't necessarily think I need a whole another work session either, but I don't mind holding it off to the next city commission meeting.
Okay. Unless there are things that you would like staff particularly to address in two weeks, that will likely be a decision point. Okay? Until then, then, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much for all the work, consultants, and those who spoke to us. Okay, next is the consideration of the ODOT intergovernmental agreement, which, the Cooperative Improvement Agreement, related to the Cove project and Agnes Road.
Let me clear out a little bit.
That will be, yes, as you leave the room, we'll get organized here, and first, I believe, our seat attorney, Mr. Kabizman, come on, Gail, you can come up, I guess. Are you involved in presenting? No?
She's not involved in presenting, but she may well have some questions.
Okay. We'll bring you up if we need to, then. Thank you. If you could clear the room quietly, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Norris, members of the commission. What you have before you is what's called a cooperative improvement agreement, typically CIJs. What's different about this is that we have a private party, PPS, Pacific Property Search, the developer of the Cove, and in those circumstances, it's not an intergovernmental, because you have somebody else in there. And you passed out earlier today a version that wasn't signed. We did receive signed copies of from ODOT now, so they're anxious to see it taken care of, and so anyway, what, let me quickly run through what it does. First, let me start with the background. This developed out of, well, there's been a long series of discussion for some times over a number of different issues, but in particular, this was tied to the approval of the Cove development that the Planning Commission approved in January, that approved a concept plan as well as detailed development plan for Phase 1 and Phase 2, and a site plan review for those phases as well. ODOT had expressed concerns about some transportation issues, in particular related to the 205-213 intersection and along McLaughlin Boulevard, and after the Planning Commission approved it, ODOT filed an appeal. ODOT and the city, since that appeal has been filed, have been talking for, about whether there's a way to resolve their concerns, given the approval, and there was a fair bit of discussion, and we finally came to terms this afternoon, and I apologize for not being able to get this to you sooner so that you can, you could have reviewed it. But what the Cooperative Improvement Agreement does is it commits PPS to pay $100,000 for improvements along McLaughlin Boulevard. Those improvements are generally described in Exhibit A and B to the document, and they include a raised median from the Dunes Drive intersection north, 425 feet on McLaughlin Avenue, as well as a, and that's shown on Exhibit A. Exhibit B shows a reconfiguration of the Frontage Road driveway in that area as well, and the specific is, location is identified on the Exhibit A. There's a significant amount of discussion in the CIA that talks about what happens if different things happen to that money, you know, if ODOT builds it with, before the money comes in, what happens if there's money left over, and those are some details. But the important thing is it commits PPS to build it, to paying a certain amount of money. In addition, it says, it commits, if Phase 1 of the Cove project gets constructed, ODOT will install bollards or gates on Agnes up by the Tri, up beyond the Tri-City plant. Phase 1 includes the construction of Agnes Avenue as a one-way street from the 205-213 interchange in through the Cove and down to Main Street and out onto 99E, and this would install bollards on that. In addition, it commits ODOT and the city that they agree to review access and management's, access and the configuration of Agnes and 213 or Washington Street, and anytime either party requests. You'll notice that the agreement prevents the city from altering the... You'll notice that the agreement prevents the city from altering the McLaughlin mitigation concept, and that's the raised median and reconfiguration of the driveway. And finally, if the city approves this, ODOT commits to withdraw their appeal of the Cove development. And those are really the specific terms of what's in this Cooperative Improvement Agreement. So if the staff recommends this as something that the commission should consider, and if you have further questions, we're available to respond to them.
And I understand that it was not easily, that this was a result of a lot of hard work between the agencies, so, thank you. Commissioner Nocita?
Quick procedural inquiry. This is on the agenda as a public hearing item. And we got this within an hour of our Urban Renewal Commission meeting. The public hasn't seen it, so they've not had time to research it and prepare public comment. So I'm not really prepared to vote on this tonight because of that issue. I think if we're going to have a public hearing, we need to give folks a chance to review it and have a public hearing.
Understood. And I would note that it is listed in the public hearing section. There's no obligation on the city's part to hold a public hearing on this cooperative agreement, cooperative improvement agreement. But certainly, the commission can allow a public hearing.
The public hearing would have had to do with actually having the, if they were to have come forward with their appeal, that would have been the public hearing, is that correct?
Yes. If, in fact, the commission agrees to this agreement, ODOT would withdraw the appeal, and that would mean that there's no reason to hold a public hearing on the appeal, which may have been why it was.
I don't know that I have to hold it over. I need to have the raised median project begins at Dunes Drive.
Described.
Described a little bit. I presume, it's just where they got the arrow going. I presume that signalized intersection would still apply, and people could cross from Dunes Drive into the shopping center.
Yes, I'd like a more explanation about how the whole thing works, because I'm a little bit unclear about that.
Then I have another question, too, but, oh, no, I don't either. Excuse me.
You may by the end of that.
Well, I might.
Currently, there's a left turn lane that leads up to the signal at Dunes Drive. And there's an access point at Firestone, we all just finally call Firestone Alley. It's a driveway that's actually in the ODOT right-of-way that leads into Oregon City Shopping Center at the north end. And currently, that's striped as an illegal left turn. However, if you're leaving the right-of-way, which you're not, into that driveway, a lot of people don't know they're not, that they're not leaving the right-of-way when they make that turn. So it's confusing as to what the legalities are for driver.
Are you talking about this one? You're talking about Exhibit B?
I'm talking about B.
I'm talking about Exhibit A, actually.
A.
You're talking about A, okay.
I'm talking about A.
And there was conflicting testimony in the Planning Commission hearing, those that felt like that was still a safe turning movement, it could be a safe turning movement into Firestone Alley. And ODOT believes that it is not a safe turning movement, so they would like to put the barricade between Dunes Drive all the way north up to, close to the bridge.
But that barricade's in a form of a median, not a, yeah.
Yes, right.
I was afraid we'd see, what do you call those, Jersey barriers on it.
We don't know what it's going to look like.
It won't be Jersey barriers.
And the Phase Two.
And it will be more attractive than just concrete barriers.
I don't think so.
I know there's enough room for it.
Our McLaughlin Phase Two project envisioned landscape medians in there, but our project didn't go all the way that far south with the median, so.
That it could be changed because?
What's planned is a concrete barrier, a concrete median, a small 18-inch.
ODOT may be able to answer that.
Oh, okay. Do you want to come up, Gail, and introduce yourself?
My name's Gail Curtis. I'm a senior planner with the Oregon Department of Transportation. And what's envisioned with the median is, as Nancy was describing it, 18 inches, about eight inches high. So it hasn't been designed, but as we've discussed it, it's, that's the concept.
Okay, okay.
And currently, there are 170, an estimated 170 illegal left turns being made at this, into the shopping center. And with this development, 30 additional left turn, illegal left turns are estimated. And it is a safety issue, and this will address it.
Right, thank you. Okay, why don't you go ahead with your explanation, then?
Okay. And so then, there was also the concern, where we had, why we ended up here in the first place, was that we had concerns about eliminating that access into Firestone permanently could increase the demand at the actual signalized intersection. And that hasn't quite been resolved, but needless to say, ODOT finds that there is a need for the median based on safety. So that's that, the median goes there. And then Mayor Norris, on Exhibit B, there was, and this is a, this is an improvement that both the city and ODOT felt was a good idea.
Could you describe to me what I'm seeing, though? I have no idea where in the world this.
Yeah, so you are.
Well, I know what it is.
It must be, looks like an entrance to the.
This is the entrance into Firestone Alley.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And right now, it looks like it's just a driveway.
Okay, right.
And we do anticipate that there will be more right turns into there when the Cove develops, going north of McLaughlin. And we were concerned with the way the parking lot is currently configured, that if we had more frequency of turning movements going into there, there could be, there would obviously be more conflicts then with cars in the parking lot coming out that way. And we agreed that if we turned this into more like, it's more like you're turning onto a street, and then the actual driveway into the parking lot is on the edge of the right-of-way, and then you go down Firestone Alley.
With a stop sign there.
Correct. And then there's stop signs. And, yeah. So the shopping center hasn't seen this or the barricade yet, but I believe that this should be a good, a good improvement for them.
But if I may interrupt, this is, this diagram's been part of the public record for quite some time. So there have been opportunities for property owners and citizens to be part of this discussion.
Could I ask, and it's probably not ODOT, well.
Commissioner Neely?
I'm sorry. It may be ODOT, because you've got the right-of-way. You show that sidewalk crossing there, the new concrete sidewalk, you got the stop sign and so forth, and I presume that can be used as a walkway to go down towards the Cove. The sidewalk doesn't go on down Firestone Alley. Is that in the plans at some development stage, that you'll be able to walk from the shopping center down to, down to the Main Street extension?
In our Phase Two with McLaughlin Boulevard project, Commissioner Neely, if we have enough money, we would like to continue the sidewalk down to Main Street, Clackamas Drive down there.
Okay.
I think my thoughts on this is that because it was a negotiated settlement, and the parties worked so hard on it, and the public hearing happened before the Planning Commission, and there were many levels of jurisdictions involved, that I would be ready to adopt this this evening.
I would, too. I'd just like a broader description of our resolution of Agnes, since we don't have any maps here.
Right, yes, let's hear about that, that's good.
And unfortunately, that was part of the one that was late getting developed. We don't have a map.
Can you verbally, can you verbally for us describe what's going on?
As I understand it, and the, get the lawyer to do it instead of the transportation people, but essentially, Agnes comes off Washington Street, goes through the Tri-Cities Plant, and onto property that is part of the Cove development. And the bollards would be, you know, I think there's a set of bollards on the Tri-Cities property at the end of the driveway currently, is that right, Nancy, or?
Well, right now, it's all under construction, but they had placed bollards at the end of Agnes, where when the structural, everybody knows the structural.
The old Agnes.
Right. And they placed bollards there to limit traffic, pedestrians, bikes only, years ago. And those have been moved because of construction.
But the end result, the one that we're talking about in term of agreement number six, that traffic-controlled gate will be constructed by ODOT across Agnes and partial on PPS property, south of the driveways for Tri-City, that is where the Tri-City property turns into PPS property. Is that accurate, as best I can do? Unfortunately, I don't have a map that shows that.
So we're not doing anything with the end that goes up the horrible end onto 213?
You mean the old Agnes?
Was that the old, I don't know what old and new is, but.
Oh, actually.
The one, how you get to the sewer plant now, when you go around the corner, and that's going to remain open?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The concept is to allow emergency access.
Yeah. But the concept also includes bike-ped mobility through there. When that, when the development occurs, I would like, because we're going to have bike-ped mobility through there, I would like a plan put forward that actually creates a jogging loop and so forth, that takes you on to Agnes, around Clackamas River, through the Tri-Cities portion, back through our Cove, this one odd, and back. And actually, and actually, because we're not going to have through traffic, I think we can start looking at that as a nice recreational bike loop, jogging loop, walking loop activity that would go through there, because we're not going to have through traffic through there, and so we won't have to worry about that.
No, that worries.
And I guess I can, I can address that one to you guys, too, as you go forward, to look at it that way. Yeah, look at it that way.
And I may add that the development team, the Pacific Property Search, has signed these agreements. So we've got.
Yeah, I believe all parties have agreed. Yeah, that's why I suggested that it was multi-jurisdictional.
Madam, I'd like to move that.
I have some questions of Ms. Curtis.
Just, it can be, we can have motion first.
No, that's okay. I'll wait on my.
Okay, Commissioner Nocita?
Ms. Curtis, I wanted to ask you about some of the concerns we had earlier regarding access spacing. I think I recall from the materials I read that this project would require an access spacing permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. We refer to it as an access permit.
Okay. Does this affect that at all?
This reinforces it.
How so?
This is, creates consistency between that permitting process, what is, will be the outcome of that permitting process, and the land use decision. So they're consistent.
Okay, okay.
Actually, I think that land use decision included a clause, if should ODOT do something then on Agnes, I think there was actually a specific clause in that agreement.
We've treated it separately, and it is a separate matter. It's another hurdle, so to speak, that has to be addressed. ODOT has jurisdiction over this, and so to make the connection from Washington Street to Agnes requires an access permit under Division 51 of state statutes. And that's a separate process. So we wanted to use the land use process to make clear what is required in Division 51, so there would be consistency. But it is another separate permitting process, and it's an administrative function.
Mr. Kowaisman?
And I would note that city staff has some disagreement with that. And part of the, what the discussion was, was that this doesn't resolve that disagreement, this CIA doesn't resolve that disagreement as much as kick it down the road, which may be the administrative process that Ms. Curtis talks about, but it may be something else.
What's the timeline?
We don't know.
Sometime in the future. Okay, you want to ask your next question?
Just as, again, a point of procedure, if this is moved right now, I would have to vote no because of my concern about the public hearing. I would like to make the motion to continue it and have a vote on it. If I fail on an up-and-down vote on whether we continue this, I will have addressed my concern about public hearings. And if I fail on that, I'm prepared to endorse this on a second vote if I fail on the public hearing. But if it's moved to pass this as is, I would have to oppose it based on that issue. So I want it on the record that I was in favor of a public hearing on this. And I'd like to first have a motion on whether to continue this to have a public hearing. And if I don't succeed on this motion to have the public hearing, I'm prepared to vote in favor of the document.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Because I think the, yeah, we could talk about the merits of that when you make a motion.
We might have a second for the discussion.
It hasn't been seconded.
Right.
It has been made yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard the motion.
No, he was just talking about it.
So does Commissioner Neely's motion preclude me from making my motion?
He didn't make a motion.
I haven't read the motion.
No, there's no motion on the floor.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to continue this item to the next city commission hearing, so that people can have access to the document, review the document, and be free to make comments in a public hearing, as it was noticed today as a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there discussion?
I just had an input from the developer, and that is that there, just for the record, there was a public hearing at the Planning Commission level.
There was a public hearing on the plan as proposed. There was not a public hearing on this document.
That's right.
And I acknowledge there was a public hearing on the plan as a whole.
Let me ask a question about this. Is my, my understanding of this being, again, a document that was negotiated over time and not always easy, that a public hearing likely wouldn't change anything?
That's right.
So that's why.
I don't want to be presumptive.
Yeah, well, I mean, the public hearing would have been a public hearing for the appeal itself, but I have no problem to open this for a public discussion. I don't think that's an issue, and that's why I second the motion. I don't think there's a problem.
Holding it over another week? Or we're just doing it now?
Hold it over two weeks? No, no, there's no public, I mean, he wants the opportunity for citizens to comment on this, and I have no problem with that.
Do, so is this time limited? Is this time sensitive?
Can we have a two-minute break for just a second?
Sure. We're, five minutes.
You so choose. That's an option.
You hold it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You may blow with the approval or the discussion of the Cooperative Improvement Agreement.
Could you include in your motion, then, the, holding over the appeal discussion until the next meeting as well?
Or.
Yeah, separate agenda.
Well, okay, we, okay.
We can't deal with that.
Or you could have the hearing tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But we intend to withdraw, so there may not be a need to have the hearing.
Right, they're very interpretative.
Yes.
Okay, the motion on the floor is that we hold this over so, to give the public an opportunity for a hearing. Again, it, it's always a good idea for the public to look at things. However, on this particular item, as with many items that we.
look at things. However, on this particular item, as with many items that we consider, which are, again, negotiated, where the parties sit in a room and work on things, that I don't, I don't know that I see that, that it would change our course of action through a public hearing because of that, and having to bring all the, all the parties together again. So, on this particular one, I'm, I'm not sure that, that there's any advantage to doing that.
I think it's just, I mean, we just got this today ourselves.
Right, I agree. We didn't get to see it. If it, if it does go handing, if it, if it is going to go hand in glove, and, and ODOT's willing to hold it over while we give the public an opportunity to look at it without making any changes, I mean, if there's not going to be negative repercussions, then, then I could do that. Though, again, I'm not sure what benefit a public hearing will have for us. Yes, sir?
And Darrell, the developer, effectively what we have is a unapproved project. We're right now negotiating and having discussions with alternative users on the Kaiser site. So, I can't say that I have a project that's approved. If you have the threat of a Luba appeal, that puts a project, I mean, you don't have a project. So, you can't really go to those people and say, "All right, we've got the ability to make this decision and move everything forward." So, that would be, it's a negative from my point of view. And since it isn't really a public item, I don't see a reason for it to be extended.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am. I'm not sure I see any reason to hold, hold up the parties, because it was a piece that was, it was an outstanding piece of a, of a whole package.
And if I may, I, I understand that it, and maybe the city attorney can explain this, that it wasn't intended to be a public hearing item.
Mr. Cypasman?
There is no requirement for the public hearing. I think what happened in the discussion, we wanted to have the IGA before the, or the CIA before the appeal hearing, and the way the commission's agenda is set up, the public hearing's become before commission business. And I think, as a result, it got listed in a public hearing when it may not have necessarily required it.
Let me go back. This is not a public hearing item, and this is one of the things, if you recall, when we, when we redid the agenda, that I argued that we all just list these things, we can order them any fashion, because, but that's not what the commission wanted to do. We want to have these categories. These two issues were connected, but you couldn't take a general business, business item unless you moved the whole section. So, what we did is took that one item out, which I think is explained in there, that, you know, it's in there because of that reason. Maybe that got dropped in there because we've had kind of shuffling back. This is not a public hearing item, but it preceded a public hearing item. There was no other place to put it on the agenda so it would show up that way. I think the other thing that you need to think about here is the appeal was a public hearing. It was done on the issues around Agnes Road and 99, which involved issue between the city and ODOT. We have worked those out, and this is an issue of working those out, and ODOT is willing to withdraw their appeal, since we've worked that out. In that regard, that's not something that's open for a public discussion, because that's a deal between ODOT and the city in that regard. So, that, you know, I don't know where you want to go with that, but I apologize for it.
The motion, the motion, the motion is before us, and if it, if it only gets two votes, of course, it fails. I'm gonna call the question.
Just a minute. Commissioner Smith?
Oh, yeah, you want to say something?
Thank you. Yes, he does. He wants to talk.
I think I forgot what I was gonna say.
Sorry.
Okay, so, my concern isn't with the public hearing so much. And so, however, I, if I support the motion to hold it, it's for the sure reason that we were given this information just tonight, and we don't have a map of what Agnes is gonna look like, or what that is, and we just heard that verbally. And the other maps, I'm not so excited about as, I, I'm such a visual person, and this tells me nothing. I can make out from, you know, I spent some time trying to figure out that that was a driveway, and that was the sidewalk coming down, because it, but as a high school art teacher, I could figure it out. But I, I'd like to see, so I, I would like to see us continue it, not necessarily for the public hearing reasons, but that I really want to see what this looks like. And...
And as I mentioned, I...
Because I don't really have any problems right now in looking at it, but I, I want to see what that other piece looks like.
And we actually do have a copy of that, it appears. This is something that was submitted that ODOT had sent, and maybe we can get that to the commission.
Yeah, if we could see that.
And what this is, is a site plan from the Tri-Cities for...
This is, you're looking at, here's Agnes.
Mm-hmm.
And here's the Tri-Cities plant. Here's the Cove development, I-205 is down here.
Oh, I have to turn it this way. Okay.
And, so this is the intended location of the gate, and it's just simply to, so it can function as an emergency access.
Was it A or B that was decided on?
I believe it's B is where the eventual location would be.
And there had, there was some discussion up here, but then we ultimately all realized it should be B, so.
I have north-north now.
She's turned it around.
I did. I turned it around for you. North, that's just the other way, isn't it? This is the Clackamas River.
Yeah.
This is the Cove.
This is the way maps usually are.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
We will make it available.
I, I think I understand.
So, this remains open. And that's...
Where's Zane's?
It, so, there are two traffic control devices, one at A and one at B? No, that's what I thought, that it's...
Somebody gets, somebody gets a warning when they start up that road, though, right? Not through?
Yeah. So, that's actually, yeah, that's B.
Wait, wait. This is A.
Oh, this is...
Oh, this is it. This tries to... Yeah, yeah.
This goes in the Cove.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
But, so this road isn't gonna extend there. It's gonna continue...
It's gonna continue, you just can't get, you just can't...
So, what do we mean by gate?
Well, I think it's, I think it's a way to get emergency vehicles through.
Yeah, it's just emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles.
Ballards removed.
So, no one will be getting in or out there?
But I, they'll have a space where bikes can get through, and people can get through, not vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm gonna pose a question that's coming up.
Wait a minute. Let's, let's come to order, please. Sorry.
The question coming up is that this gate that's there is, something can be open for emergency, emergency vehicles, but there still will be access points for both pedestrians and bicycles to come through.
Absolutely. There has never been any debate about that.
And let me read you the terms of the agreement, which says, constructed, you know, traffic controlled device, Gator Ballards, will be constructed by ODOT across Agnes Avenue, partially on PPS property, south of the driveways, to prohibit access to all non-emergency motorized vehicles, but allow access to bicycles and pedestrians.
May I ask a question? Is this, would this be a device that could be actually triggered by, I mean, we got, we got the, our police department, fire departments have the capability of triggering a signal. It can, can, will, will this be able to be triggered? That is, nobody's gonna have to open the gate for the emergency vehicles. They can actually open the gate themselves.
It hasn't been designed, but...
But it could, but it could be done.
Yes. And we want it to work in that fashion. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's key.
Safety is the main objective.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't understand the access points to Tri-City Sewer now.
That, that goes to the end of their land, essentially.
It's the Phase Two of the administration building.
Go between there and the future road into the Cove.
The access point on South Agnes Avenue to Washington Street isn't on this map?
No.
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 That's future right-of-way. Where they're located right now is a future right-of-way for Agnes, where it's gonna come and hook into the Tri-City...
Right, I understand.
...Phase Two.
Yeah.
Washington Street is, there's an actual floating segment that's north of the 213-205 interchange.
Floating segment.
Well, you have Washington Street that we all know of.
Yeah.
And then, if you're going north on 213, you go through the 205 interchange. That turns into Washington Street again. So, that's the connection we're talking about. That's the Washington-Agnes.
Right.
And that's the connection to Tri-City Sewer?
I have more visuals.
Yeah, it'd be good to have more visuals.
Maybe not.
It doesn't look like the street I know. Okay.
The green section is, leads into Washington. Here's the Agnes going down along Tri-Cities.
Yeah. Okay.
And so, you have right here, the existing Tri-City Sewer.
Mm-hmm.
This is the Phase Two construction, but as part of the initial build for the class right here, there were...
Oh, that's a new section?
That's a new section.
Yes, yes.
Oh!
Yeah, that's not the existing room.
Now, here's, here's another...
Where's the new section then?
Here's, okay, but there's a question about that, because that is the old Rossman landfill, and it's owned by Clackamas County.
Not Rossman, but...
Old Rossman. But do we have permission from Clackamas County to do that road construction?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there a party to access to get through there later on?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, in the future. Yeah, when it's adopted. Okay. Got it. It's becoming more clear. Okay, let's go now.
I'm glad I helped the cause in clearing everything.
Yeah, that's all right.
No, we needed to understand what we're talking about here. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. There are other, are there other comments? Ready for the vote? Okay. Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
No. Motion pa, uh, motion fails. Three, one. Okay.
I changed, I changed my vote basically because I think I understood it before, and the maps help illustrate it, and so...
May I have your next motion, please?
I'm going to do that.
Thank you.
I felt...
Any interest? We have a bet that we're not...
I want, I, I needed to explain my vote since I seconded it, the motion.
I don't mean to...
I move for the approval of the final version of the Cooperative Improvement Agreement between ODOT, the City of Oregon City, and Pacific Property Search.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita. On the motion, see no further discussion. Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
So, therefore, the, we do not need to have the next item?
What the ODOT representatives told me is that they will withdraw it upon written, once they have the signed version of it. We could take a minor recess for five minutes, get some signatures.
And sign it?
And we'd have an oral withdrawal.
So, that's gonna happen...
Are we ready?
Well, we need an attachment, just so we make sure it's attached.
Could we jump over that, then, to the next item on the agenda? It is a problem?
Yeah.
The, the question is whether we want to attach the, the map showing the location of the, the Ballards and location B. If we do that, there's no reference to it in the document. We can...
Why can't, why can't we continue this until the next time and have it withdrawn? I think that's the easiest way to do it.
Can't you just attach this?
We can attach that, but what that means is we've changed the agreement in a way that ODOT...
I, I move to continue this, the public hearing on the appeal to the next city, city commission meeting.
Second.
That...
Okay.
And at that time, ODOT can withdraw.
Is that going to work?
Okay, so let me make sure I understand the direction. The direction would be that add the new Exhibit D, that would include the map showing the, the location of the Ballards or gate, and bring that back to you for, for final approval with no other changes, and...
Correct.
Okay.
That'd be okay?
And, and in case we miss something, in case we miss something, then, and then it can be put in there. I mean, so, yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
All right. Done. We will take that next time. No, Dean, no motion?
I have a motion.
Oh, I have a motion.
I approve, I appreciate your support.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion to continue on the...
All right. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith for pulling all the pieces together on the, on the hearing, on the CIA, so that we can have the, deal with the hearing at the next meeting.
And it's a continuation of the appeal until the next meeting, at which time they can withdraw.
Yes. Okay. On the motion, Kelly, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Just a minute, we have a question.
We have a question.
Do we need to open the public hearing, Phil?
No, we're...
No.
No, there's, there's no, they can...
Was anybody waiting? No, never. I don't want to ask that question.
Kelly.
Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero.
I want to have a request, just in case there are people that are waiting through all this thing to testify. I would like to put this at the beginning of the next agenda. Mayor, you order the agenda. Would you...
We can move that forward.
Would you like to move it another moment?
We can.
Well, no, she, she sets the order of the agenda. I just made a request. We put it at the beginning.
Sure.
And then you don't have to wait here all night long next time.
Thank you very much.
You're used to dealing with us, aren't you? People like us, I move.
Next, we have actually...
Yeah. You do that, yeah.
I would like to ask the commissioners, our next item on the agenda are the, is the city commission goals and objectives. And this...
I wanted it called over.
Yeah, this is, I think, too lengthy for this evening.
I agree.
So, may we hold this over? We may. It shall be done. Next, we have a supplemental agreement to the personal services agreement for the Oregon 213, I-205 Bridge...
May I take a moment, just in case some people are leaving? We, we...
Excuse me, did you?
Before we do this, I got a que, I think some people might be leaving that we might have to reference. The, the action we took regarding the Cove, was there anything specific in that action that dealt with the Kaiser, or not?
Uh-uh.
Okay. That's fine. That's what I wanted to find out.
Okay. Back to the agenda. We are now on Item 7B, the supplemental agreement to the personal services agreement for the I-205, 213, Bridge to Abernathy Creek, the Jug Handle improvements, Phase One, for final design services with Ovek Consulting Engineers. And staff on this has left the room. Oh, I can't see her. She's hiding. Okay. Nancy Freshhour.
I'm lost.
I know. Good evening again. It is still good evening.
It is still evening. Not yet morning.
This is a project we're asking for supplemental agreement to a, a contract you, the city commission approved, just, gosh, probably about three meetings ago, four meetings ago. We've been working through the preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition for the improvements to I-205 and Highway 213 at Washington Street, also called the Jug Handle Project.
Also called our number one transportation priority.
That's right. And the, what's linked to that project is the Redland Road intersection improvements. And we have been, it's been recommended to us that we combine these in terms of doing the preliminary engineering and the, and presenting the entire project to ODOT for environmental work and right-of-way, so that there aren't any questions about, well, what impact, does that have on that one? And what that means is we have to extend the work that was originally going to be done just for the Jug Handle to the Redland Road location as well. And the consultant that was selected to do the Jug Handle Project, when we first did the selection process anyway, they had proposed on both sections. So, we're not concerned about their knowledge of the project. And it does, the project, to extend the project to Redland Road now is another $99,000. And in the long run, it'll streamline the, streamline the design process and certainly provide more certainty about environmental impacts for either project, as we're working through the federal approval process for either phase of the 213 corridor. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, anyone? Or a motion?
Commissioner Nacita? We recently approved about $300,000.
Mm-hmm.
Why, what is, is this a whole separate piece of this, or is this a cost overrun? What is...
No, it's a whole separate piece. We started out trying to, we're trying to do this as efficiently as possible in terms of responding to what funding becomes available and... in terms of responding to what funding becomes available and, um, not moving too fast, but still wanting to prepare in a logical way to do a project. It's not easy, but we're trying to, we're trying to be adaptable. And we started out thinking, well, let's just start with the smallest piece we can, which is looking at the, um, design exception package, the design acceptance package for the jug handle area, that project area. And we've been talking about the Redland Road segment for quite a while. And indeed, some of our appropriations money has previously been assigned to the Redland Road improvements. But again, we were trying to say, let's pick off the smallest piece we can, and that's what we presented to you. And now as we're moving forward, getting deeper into the environmental studies and in looking at, in talking to ODOT, suggesting that, gosh, it might be best to run this as one big project anyway and to try to get funding for the entire thing, or to for sure, very carefully define, define the project, get that definition approved by ODOT, and then create, establish exact phases for which we then get discrete amounts of funding. They felt like it's, would be most prudent to look at it as the whole project for now and then continue to work on the phasing as time goes on. And I think this is an effective way to look at the project as a whole to reduce the potential for uncertainty six months from now, or twelve months from now, or even for that matter, twenty-four months from now. Should funding come in separate packages, we will have the entire thing defined. And, um, we'll also know what kind, if we can't get funding for both ends at once, how can we phase it? What packages are we looking for? And it, I think it really is a good idea. We were trying to just be as careful as possible to start with, and now we're adding on to that as we learn more.
So I guess, um, I, I was under the impression when we voted on the first part of it that that was going to be all we were going to be asked for as far as engineering fees. And this is another respect. Is this all of it or?
No, this is.
How many more of these can we anticipate being asked for?
Well, if, if we go all the way to final design, which, if we moved quickly to final design to be prepared for the construction funding, you could be looking at as much as three and a half, four million dollars of, and keep in mind that that is county mitigation money that was intended to spend on Highway 213 in this area and previous money that we've obtained, obtained through appropriations that is earmarked for this segment of highway. So we're not spending, at this point, we're not asking urban renewal money, city money. These are, these are funds that have been previously designated for this section of highway, but because you're the contracting agency, you have to approve it, if that makes any sense.
Commissioner Neely?
What we show here is the site location on the map is, is just the highway itself. It doesn't include the intersection. Was the intention to include the intersection, I presume, or not?
Yes.
Okay, I don't want to lose track of something that I mentioned at a previous commission meeting. And you said that you could, you could, we could have whoever does the preliminary design look at the question. It would not be something that would be handled in either of these projects. But to look at whether there would be the potential of a frontage road that would link Holcombe to the jug handles so people coming down Holcombe could get right turn access only going south on 213. I mentioned that, and you said it could be looked at, but, uh, I'm, I'm not sure that, that, that was remembered.
I think we need to review that. Um, I should probably have a meeting with you because I'm not understanding the right turn access on Highway 213 with a frontage road off of Holcombe.
Okay, I will talk to you about you.
Yeah, let's do that. I, I remember you talking about that, but I don't.
You said, yeah, it could be looked at at that time. I'll be happy to do, talk to you about it.
That'd be good.
Okay, any other questions? Excuse me.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Any other questions on this, um, agreement? If not, may I have a motion for adoption, please? Commissioner Nacita?
I'll move that we, um, approve agenda item number seven B. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the supplemental agreement number one to personal services agreement, PSA, parentheses, with OPEC Consulting Engineers to provide Phase One thirty percent final design engineering services for OR 213 I-205 Bridge to Abernathy Creek Tributary Jug Handle Improvement Project.
So a second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. So further comments or discussion? Thank you. Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. That concludes, I think. Nope. Consent, uh, we're moving into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith on the consent agenda. The vote, please, Kelly.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved four, zero. Moving on to communications, first, our city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, I do have one item this evening. I think all of you are very aware of the issue surrounding Clackamas Heritage Partners and the situation of the museums today. And, uh, when that issue was developing, I did discuss a couple of options with Mr. Porter in terms of ways that, uh, we might, or at least that I would be willing to bring to the council to, uh, talk about ways we might be able to help to keep the doors open. And we did talk in terms of some type of matching grant, again, looking at that business, uh, business license proposal. That's just one of a couple of different ideas we had chatted about. Uh, but I said, it's really up to them, kind of balls in their court, to find funding elsewhere as well. I know that they've been in conversation with, uh, the Tourism Commission, TDC, uh, and they, my understanding is there was an agreement between those two in regards to funding, I think, TDC purchasing the study that they have done, and that was presented to the county on Tuesday. And I think the county, at this point, has not taken action on that. If anything's going to happen, and goodness, I think we all have different, uh, ways of looking at CHP and the museum issue, what have you, but, uh, I don't think any of us disagree that the closure of the museums is not a good thing for Oregon City. So, uh, how do we do this? And I think you might want to talk about some type of joint task force or committee made up of TDC, representative CHP, the county, and the city, uh, kind of get together and see if we could put together plans of how we get the doors open here.
Yes, I'd like to, um, definitely address that. Um, I am getting copious mail. This is, uh, one school class that just visited recently, and I'm getting mail from all over the United States and the state of Oregon, for people that value this, value the interpretive center and, and our, um, facilities that are temporarily closed. And I've been in conversation with the county. Um, uh, the county's eighty-seven thousand dollars, which was to purchase two studies, um, was contingent on funding from the city. And so, um, and the county ha- has multiple requirements that they, that, that they have for marketing, et cetera. And I know that in our goals, we wanted CHP to come before us to give their financials, their long-term strategic plan, et cetera. And, um, so my recommendation to the, to the county has been in, in informal conversations that we should all be in the same room together. Possibly two kind of commissioners, possibly two from, from here. I'd be willing to be one of those and welcome another, um, person. And, uh, representatives of the, of CHP or, and the other heritage organizations to talk about, um, in the same room, what we require to move forward with funding. I mean, I think that, that the, that, um, it will require some government assistance likely to go forward. It will also require, I think, a strategic plan, um, and I think knowledge of what the future for these organizations is going to be. Right now, I think their goal is to try to get the doors open for summertime because that's so important to, that's where their, their attendance numbers come from. And on the, and on the other hand, when we talked at our, uh, retreat about, that, when, when the economist Joe Courtright said, what we needed to do in Oregon City to find our niche was to be the best Oregon City we could be, build on our uniqueness. And I think every plan we've ever put together always had our heritage areas, our sites, as what is unique in Oregon City. So to have those fail isn't an option, but, um, I think it's unclear to me how the solution should be crafted. So I would like to propose that, um, we develop a meeting rather quickly. Uh, Clackamas Heritage Partners is putting together a, um, they've called a community meeting for March thirty-first to let the, I think it's a listening post essentially, let the community talk to them. And, um, they've started heavy fundraising efforts. And, um, I mean, I think there are a lot of questions that, uh, out there that I certainly would like answered as well. So anyway, that's my, that's my proposal for the short term, to get something started. Commissioner Neely?
I agree. I think we, we need to do something, but let me mention my dissatisfaction that a decision was made by the Clackamas Heritage Partners Board. They apparently made it in one meeting. There was no attempt to make a presentation before they actually made that to the City of Oregon City. We contract with the Clackamas Heritage Partners to run the interpretive center. The interpretive center belongs to the City of Oregon City. And the fact, the fact that we got hit out of the blue on this, I think, is very upsetting to me. I, I, I think it was a.
And the other partners as well?
Oh, I'm sure the other partners as well, and I, I want to make that statement public. I, I just, I'm, I'm very irritated by it, and I think in the review, we need to actually review the, I, I'd like, I'd like the history of the revenue stream to be presented to us. Uh, I'd, I'd like to, uh, I, you know, I, they're talking about the future, but we, we have these maintenance issues of things that are down there currently, and it's, it's very difficult for me to visualize an organization's going to put together a more expensive operation in the future when they aren't currently able to maintain their current, uh, facilities, or the ones that they've contracted to manage. And so I think it, I need, I think it needs to be a broad-focused discussion. And I think whoever goes there needs to maybe speak from somewhat of a hard-nosed position. Uh, my suggestion, I mean, uh, Jim is already a member of the Clackamas Heritage Partners. I think it makes sense for him to be one of the two and you to be one of the two. But I would hope you would express at least the, I, I, I know we all share the same degree of dissatisfaction that I do, but, uh, I, I think, I think we got to be hard-nosed in those presentations, frankly.
Commissioner, uh, I don't know who was first, sorry, didn't see.
You can go, I'm still thinking.
Okay, Commissioner Nacita. Well.
I, I, I want to propose a hard-nosed solution. Um, I, 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 I will say frankly that I'm not interested in a task force. I'm interested in, as a prerequisite to a task force, that pursuant to our goals and objectives, we get the accounting, the financial accounting first. Now, that's, that's what I think our, our demand should be at the outset and that we don't proceed on anything else until we are provided that financial accounting.
Commissioner Smith?
I say everything that Commissioner Neely said. And also, um, I, I do feel that the interpretive center and the other two entities, the Museum of the Oregon Territory and the Stevens Crawford House, are valuable, extremely valuable, and that they need to be open, um, especially this year. So I, I'm extremely disappointed at the fact that they're not open. I'm not, um, completely opposed to, to putting together a group to talk about this. But I'm concerned is what that group, um, what that group's, um, um, mission would be and what that group's, um, what the membership of that group would be or the, the, who, who that would include. So I'm also have similar concerns to Commissioner Nacita in that, um, I don't want to see a task force put together to decide whether or not we should give help with CHP with funds, et cetera, but more about where the CHP is going in the future and, and that kind of a discussion. I, I would hate to see any commitment of support through funds going through a, a, a group that's separate from this commission that, that if there is something like that, it has to come back to us. I, I think we need to see, um, the financial statements for the CHP going way back, um, way, way back. And I, I think that's extremely crucial. I definitely say, think that if there is a, um, task force or a committee put together, I would definitely like to be a part of it, um, if at all possible, and I can make the meetings, um, with my schedule. But this is, um, perhaps one of the biggest, um, issues, and it just happens to fall on the most crucial year and, which makes it even more difficult. And I, and I, I'm torn because, um, I think that in some respects, I, I see this in kind of the situation that the school district's in, in where, um, we don't have enough money. And then we, we're talking about closing school days and whatever and get everybody worked up and to find a way to fix it and not really thinking about what the real problems are. And this is such a crucial year with the, the hundred fifty is that, um, I see this as, you know, they're going to gain support and, and people wanting to save the interpretive center because we all do. But we need to make sure that we're not in this situation again in six months because this has been an ongoing thing for ten years.
If I could just give you a, um, brief flavor of what the conversation was at the county commission level, you'll see that I think we're all on the same page. Um, I guess my, um, Commissioner Lineiger, um, who comes most recently from the Meyer Memorial Trust, wanted to have what she would require of any person coming to for a grant, and that would be two years audit, two years of budget, uh, you know, and the strategic plan. And I think the value of the meeting, I'm not sure it's a, I'm not sure whether it would be more than one meeting necessary, necessary, but I think that it's important for us to all be in the same room together. And my proposal is, not sacrilese or anything, but I guess I was thinking, two county commissioners, Linda Bell from the TDC, because that's the possible funding source, she's the, uh, executive director of that, two, two people from here, and if, uh, if we wanted a staff person, you know, that's, that's kind of Scott Archer's thing, or it could be Larry. Oh, Scott.
He's not here, he gets it.
Scott Conrad, I think it was.
How the free sheep go?
There you go. And, uh, you know, whatever delegation, the Heritage Partners. And then, uh, you know, perhaps represented from, um, someone unaffiliated with CHP, uh, heritage person too. But I think the value, again, in, in getting together is for us to understand what we all need to be able to contemplate, um, any assistance that we, that we might give in the future. I don't think, I'm not hearing any conversation in the community of anybody's talking about giving any money without strings. So you had something now, next, Commissioner Nacita?
And also, uh, too, everyone has talked about how do we go into the future versus it's just, just the bridge for a short term. I don't know.
And of course, the Falls Access Project is part of that, and should, you know, what is the plan for the three facilities? Do they remain together? Do they break apart? Do they open at a date certain? Do some of them open? Yeah, I think there's so many options that need to be explored. And if we're going to be funders, it's on our property, you know, we, we actually do have a little bit of say in the future, I believe, of the organization. Commissioner Nacita, I interrupted you.
I wanted to just kind of, um, amplify what Commissioner Smith said about, um, management. And I think the, the accounting, the financial accounting, um, is probably the key tool that will illuminate management issues. And that's why I, I would rather that we receive the financial accounting first before, um, sending any delegation.
About me?
Commissioner Neely?
I actually, I actually support the formation of the task force, because in fact, the county has specific understandings and agreements with the Heritage Partners too. And I think there'd be a, almost a sense of dysfunction if we had the different organizations making requests separately. I think we're making our concerns put forward here. I think we need more than a two-years' audit, frankly. I think we need to look at the whole history from our standpoint, at least to the management of the facility that we own. But I think there's another element. The reason the Clackamas Heritage Partners were formed was because the TDC said, "Look, we're getting grant requests from every single museum for advertising and so forth. There has to be an umbrella organization through which this passes." That is not what happened.
No.
What happened is the Clackamas Heritage Partners went ahead and put the moot and the interpretive center, and of course, that brought in the Marty Stevens Crawford House into a single thing. I will tell you, the, I'm on the board of the McLaughlin Memorial Association. We put our events, a year ahead of time, we send those events to the Clackamas Heritage Partners. The only events that ever get published in their quarterly are the events they have at those museums. They do not include the events that the McLaughlin Memorial Association puts forward. My guess is if we talk to other people that are running other museums, they'd have the same issue. I don't think the Clackamas Heritage Partners met the requirements that were, well, met what was desired from the, from the, yeah, thank you.
Yes, and now that, I mean, we have some opportunity now with, we have leverage.
Exactly right. So I don't, I mean, I don't know that the Clackamas Heritage Partners ever functioned to meet the original goals that were set forward, and I think that has to be looked at as well in the process.
Okay, what do you want to do about?
I might suggest to get a good representative from some of the other museums there, since that was...
No, that's my suggestion too, the one...
Including Marmottinger House.
Yep, that we do that. You want to put together that? I mean, I think the county would like to meet pretty quickly.
Actually, I mean, because of Commissioner Smith's big interest, I would suggest maybe he be the second person in addition to you. He's got all...
You've got good history.
He's got the history.
I'm happy with that. That's okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, you don't need another meeting? Okay, Rocky and I will put our names forward, and I'll work with the county and link together the suggestions that you've given. I think we're pretty much on the same page. I think these are the same conversations that I've been hearing, so we'll go forward to that, and bring back a report to you, I guess.
And you don't have to be involved, Eric.
I am so thankful. When it comes to staff, it's going to look a lot like the sewer system. It's flowing downhill on it. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. I think we need to celebrate a little bit. We've had a long meeting, and I think we ought to celebrate the 24 acres that Metro bought in Kenema. It's really exciting. We also need to celebrate the almost $1 million that we got for the promenade from the ODOT package, and the stimulus money that we, that Oregon City got to fix the two intersectional alignments on Molalla Avenue. So Oregon City is really doing very well this week. And that's terrific, actually. I think it is cause for celebration. If you don't mind if I go first, I have a whole bunch of things, but oh, the other cause for celebration. I was at Senator Wyden's Town Hall on Sunday, where it was pointed out, we should have known, but I didn't read the fine print in the stimulus, that the locks, the Loma Falls locks also got almost $1 million to, for, almost $2 million, excuse me, it's 1.93 or something like that. That is basically for the continued inspection, but they're also on an appropriations list, so hopefully there'll be some more on that. So those are all causes for celebration. Causes that we need to look at more closely, you know, I serve on the regional reserves, urban rural reserves committee. Doug probably will dovetail on this conversation as well, but I wanted to pass out to you what is new, and I guess there's actually a newer one, but we have the study area in the region, and now it's been refined to candidate urban reserves and candidate rural reserves. And I think we actually have this scheduled for our work session, but I want to give you an advance warning, an advanced preparation. Oh, there's more here, too, if the rest of you want to see these. Is there one that's full, or my original is, but here's the, if you want to pass those out, that's great. Just to help you through it, this is basically where the sewer and water overlay. And so in the preliminary studies that Metro and other staff have done, you'll notice that that bright orange area to the east of Oregon City is, and especially when it's crosshatched, that's a strong candidate area because it's water and sewer serviceable. And you'll see that green area south of Oregon City has high water, low sewer suitability, and some other issues in it, but if you'll notice that the areas of consideration are pretty large around Oregon City, we need to get very serious about examining what our local aspirations are. In the, just to get you the flavor of the conversation for Clackamas County, very, very strong business movement to have the I-5 corridor to be an industrial, commercial corridor. And Charlotte Lehan, who's now county commissioner, said, "Well, without building another bridge, that's not feasible. Boone Bridge is totally out of capacity." So that was kind of pushed back on that, but the business community is very, very strong about that. The strongest speakers besides the business community were probably from the city of West Lynn, who, if you see this little, that little green triangle, it's part of the Stafford Triangle, and they are mobilizing to get that changed from urban reserve to rural or rural reserve or some other combination. So we'll discuss this in great detail. Dan Drinlaw has now the transportation overlay, and then the factors we talked about, the urban, factors for urban reserves, and factors for rural reserves have not been overlaid on this either, except for transportation, sewer, and water. So those will be applied, and the areas, I'm sure, will shrink, but you need to be aware of this, and we'll be talking about it in greater detail. So that's my report from reserves.
Can I just make a comment now?
Yes, yes, why don't you go ahead, please?
I assume that somebody, maybe at the county commission level, has modified what was put forward. The southern, first of all, you look at the southern, and that was drawn rather extensively out of the policy advisory committee without probably the recognition of the challenges that were there. When we went through our process, we had four different tables, came up with different pictures. The most inclusive ones were the ones that were accepted. But I will mention that that big extension into the Beaver Creek area was not one that came before the policy advisory committee of the county.
Okay.
The broad area south of the city there, not including the extension into the green area there, in fact, was a big area that was taken into account. As I say, they took the most extensive shaded areas that came out of each of the committees. Our committee gave a very smaller one than you see there.
Yeah, it's preliminary work. This is just for study, so now the study is going to be focused on these areas, but I wanted you to see that, because the work will be very intense over the next few months. On April 14th or 15th, there will be a hearing in the West Lynn Oregon City area, where citizens are invited to comment on these, because we know what's on the ground in the area.
Where is it?
It's undetermined. West Lynn volunteered to have it there. April 14th or 15th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We'll let you know, but that's the best I know on that. Hopefully, some of you are going to City Hall Day at the Capitol on April 1st. I've got registration forms, I'm sure you guys do too. It's for county commissioners, for city commissioners particularly, mayors can go too, but. Bus, TriMet, as, I don't think we've really talked about this publicly, is eliminating bus 153 possibly, and I've written a letter on your behalf, since we support public transportation to TriMet, with talking points from our capable transportation staff to say that, and I'm urging citizens to also, because the comment period, I believe, ends March 31st. Nancy, do you have any more comments on that one at all?
No, I just, it's, the Transportation Advisory Committee is going to send a letter as well.
I think as many letters as can be sent as possible. It may be an uphill battle on that one, because the numbers aren't very good, but we really need that, as much public transportation we can for our citizens. The other, one of the other committees I serve on is light rail, Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project. We just selected the bridge design, and so I have that booklet. It's really very, very interesting. City of Milwaukee is asking why it's going to be only a light rail pedestrian bicycle bridge, not a driving bridge, but the problem is that the ramps that we'd need for cars at either end, there's no, there's no space, there's no right of way, and the cost would be astronomical. So that design and work is happening, that's good. The other thing on your behalf, there is a, well, you know, the legislature's on, so there's a lot of watching over bills, and I lobbied Senator Kenimer, Representative Kenimer, on our behalf, because a collective bargaining bill was before his Labor and Business Committee to include our temporary employees, like the lifeguards at the swimming pool, and our park program people, and those who work on public works in the summertime, temporary workers into collective bargaining, which would raise costs, likely lead to elimination of our programs. So he was very, very responsive, and that bill hasn't gone anywhere yet, so. And then one last thing, I did go to Washington, D.C. last week, and had an opportunity to meet with all the congressional delegation, along with the other members of the Regional Transportation JPACT Committee, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. And the first place we went was Congressman Wu's office, said, "Oh, Oregon City, that's the place where all the museums are closed, how can we get those open?" So I guess another reason to move with clarity on that is that it's a distraction. But anyway, I had an answer better prepared for the second office. We think we did very well talking to them about policy issues such as, things, I just would like to give you these examples, even though it's really late. There's federal red tape that our delegation can help us with. For instance, Washington County got money for some solar panels. They wanted to put on telephone poles, put the panels up high to run their streetlights and signs, and many states do that. However, the federal requirements are that the poles, when they go in, have to have an EIS, environmental impact statement, or, it's the other one, I told you, archaeological survey done on it, which made the cost so prohibitive, they don't get to have solar panels and use that money for that. Bike, the other thing that we are lobbying for was wider bike lanes, always have to be along the freeways where you come in contact with the bus mirror. Why can't bike lanes be built away from the car corridor? And that was looked at, and then the federal sidewalk standards are rather prohibitive, and so if you want to build sidewalks in an underserved area, it's difficult. So we talked about policy issues. They were all very receptive. We met the staff people, who are obviously our point of first contact, had an opportunity to have individual conversations with a couple of the people, so made them aware of our issues. It was a very, I thought, very interesting, of course, but productive time, and we'll see where the results lie. So, sorry, that's quick, and I think I did it all. So who else? That was Washington County. It actually got stimulus money, but wasn't able to use it.
And it's partly the timing, because getting an EIS or doing the environment, which is what we're doing even for Molalla, Warner, Melney, we have to go through this pretty extensive environmental process. And if it's a simple project like ours, you can do it, but it can take months and months and months, and they had to give the money away.
And part of the Recovery Act, the Stimulus Act, which they like to call the Recovery Act, is that the money is supposed to come out the door really quickly. And then the other thing that they want all of us to do, they want to know that they did a good thing, so we're supposed to document everything and let them know about the successes. They want to know about every paving project, and what good it did in the community, so I guess we need to tell our story. Others who have anything to report? You had an agenda item.
I do, I have two items. One is, I have a request on my fellow commissioners regarding my commissioner expense account. I've been pretty frugal to date regarding the expenses that I've incurred, but I do have a request, and I bring it up because it's not typically what I find in the commissioner's manual, that explicitly, at least, one can use a commissioner's expense amount. I'd actually like to create an outreach website for myself as a city commissioner, to communicate directly with folks, maybe have a blog, and I'd either want to have this up on the city server, or be able to use my commissioner's expense account to find a very inexpensive host for a city commissioner website. And I just wanted to run that by you all.
I think those are tough areas. I'm not, I, what I, my response is, if it were me, I would use my campaign funds, because it looks a lot, when you're doing something as an individual, and not necessarily representing the city, it looks a lot like, well, not campaigning, but like a campaign fund expense. So I don't know what our attorney would say on that. I think it's a gray area.
It is. My initial reaction was concern about that particular area. Certainly, there's nothing wrong with using city money to inform residents of, you know, and to have that communication. It is a very difficult one that presents some issues. As I heard it, I thought, you know, one of the things, if this is something they want to pursue, to have a discussion with the Government Ethics Commission, and see if there are concerns that they have. You know, so it's not impossible, but you know, like anything new, you get some resistance, and you need to work through some issues, but it, you know, it's something that, it's possible, but you want to tread carefully, I think.
Okay, thanks for that input.
If you wanted to contact the Ethics Commission, then you could let us know what you learned.
Yeah, to just, to inform everybody.
Good.
The second item I have actually involves a motion. I want to add an agenda item to the next commission meeting, and I do want to have this involve maybe a public hearing and public input. And I was involved, and my supporters were involved with the effort to advance a charter amendment to our city charter to allow voters to approve the issuance of urban renewal bonds. And there were almost 1,000 petition signatures gathered before one of the chief petitioners withdrew and more or less sunk the effort. I would like to put an agenda item on the next commission meeting to have a discussion of having the city commission actually refer to the voters, such an amendment, and allow people to come in and speak to that matter before the commission, and decide then, after a discussion, about how we want to proceed on that. So I would go ahead and make that motion to put that on our next agenda item for next month, for our next commission meeting.
May I suggest, the usual pattern is to put it on a work session agenda, so that we can discuss the parameters of it, and then bring, you know, out of that then would become the elements that we wanted to bring here. A work session is a more informal way to discuss different things, and have, I think to formulate it in a more informal sitting rather than here at the table. And then staff is able to also give us some help at that point, before we bring it here for, you know, action. Normally, we like to see things three times.
Sure. I would prefer to do it at a formal city commission meeting.
Why?
Because a lot of people put a lot of effort into this, and I think they want to be heard, and typically, we don't allow public comment at city commission work sessions. And I want to open this up to the public.
Whether it be an opportunity after the work session, I mean, we couldn't pass it as a motion without public hearing.
Well, I'm just stating my preference, and I do so.
Did you make a motion?
He did. He moved, put that on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to put an item on the agenda to permit citizens to vote on urban renewal bonding. Is that correct? Is there a discussion? Commissioner Smith?
And if this doesn't pass, I would definitely, I would rather, I would talk about it at a work session, for sure, definitely. So, I'll support it either way.
I mean, I think the push is going to go that direction. For one thing, I don't believe the work session has any basis for not forwarding a request from the Commissioner to the work session, but they tried to do that to me once, and I said, "You can't do that, because work session is not a decision-making process." I think I'm going to vote against it, but I, the point is that we, and put it on a work session. I think Commissioner has a right to extend anything coming out of the work session to a commission meeting, that is, the work session cannot vote to say then, you can't take it on.
This is not a voting.
It still can be put forward. I'd feel a lot more comfortable with some information ahead of time. And so, I'm going to vote no, but I will support the work session, and then you can bring it forward to the commission after we've had our work session. And I wouldn't have any problem with it.
Further discussion? Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
No, motion fails, two to two.
You want to make a motion?
Wait, no, we don't need a motion for the work session, we'll just put it on. I'm staff, let's see today.
Oh, was that the end of the meeting?
Is there, no, no, that was the vote. It was waking you up. Are there more reports from Commissioner Communications?
One announcement.
Yes.
And just wanted to make an announcement that on, I believe it's April 4th, is the Oregon City Schools Foundation Auction, and tickets are $20. It's a good event to go to, similar to the Chambers Auction, which is also very fun to go to, we just had that, and so, encourage people to support the Schools Foundation.
Great. With that, we are adjourned.